Anga and all those things to the formalization, maybe we'll show the formalization part. And you see, five thousand. So the moment you say we're banning small-scale mining, not galamse, because galamse is banned, it means they're asking five thousand people in Taku not to work, punishing them for something that is not their fault. So this is some of the conundrum that we face. Other than that, our biggest headache is getting a place for them to work. Chair, it will take time. We need to make funds available to geological services. We have started. It will take some two, three, four, five years to get all these millions of people a place to work. Other than that, for now, those four things that I explained, I think you went to the washroom also. Companies graciously giving us areas, maincom licenses that have been canceled, we're giving out to small-scale people. The last scale people who said, oh, we found a place, but we want it very big. So maincom take it and license, and also the sheer miners coming to us. So somebody from Bongo or BT Babes, Honorable BT Babes, say, oh, this is my coordinates. We check in the cadastre if it's available, it's not by water body, whatever, we process it and we do it for them. So right now, that's what we are doing. So what is causing the galamse is this trying error. And now it has been worsening by the problem in Burkina Faso. Many of the people in the water area are these Togorites and Burkina Faso people. Anywhere you go, you find small-scale cyanide. Trust me, the technology is from Burkina Faso, because our people, our star is a mercury thing. So the Burkina Faso have brought what they call this, they call it pipi pipi, okay? So they are holding it. So chair, they just move around the community. So when you hear ke, it means that, oh, there are traces of gold there. They bring the excavator, they destroy the place. So the solution to illegal mining, if you ask me, ninety-nine percent is geological investigation of all these thousands of acres of block areas that Minas Commission has designated. So it will take time for us to deal with the problem, but we can't make apologies for the middle look-alike, prayer, brim and the water body, because that one you can't make an apology. It is illegal. So we just have to get rid of them. That's not my job. My job is not to go into the water body and take people. That's not my job. My job is to bring it to attention of the appropriate security authorities that these activities has not been sanctioned by Minas Commission. Go get them out, because my officer is not supposed to shim and go to a brim and go and evict them. It is the security people that must do that, not Minas Commission. And chair, how do you have illegal mining taking place behind a police station in Yenam? The Minas Commission officer has reported several times. So sometimes we get blamed for something that is not our fault. But as I said, if you pick any evidence or semblance of a license area where things are not being brought properly, I'll be the first to stand before the committee and for that matter, the whole Ghana, and apologize and say, look, we fell short here, we do our work properly, or things like that. So where we must take blame, we will take blame. But you can't blame an officer of the Minas Commission where somebody is closed by the roadside, especially when he has reported to the assembly. His job ends once he reports that, look, I've seen this, it's illegal, go and calm down on them. He cannot go and evict those people. It's not our job. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Honorable Roxanne.
Chairman, thank you very much. Let the record reflect that that's my big brother sitting across. He's taught me a lot of things. He taught me geography, A-level geography. But I'm not happy about some of his responses. And senior, you see, I'll tell you, because in one breath, you are asserting your rights under the law as defined in Act 450, nineteen ninety-three, and Act 703, two thousand, two six, the Minerals and Mining Act, as well as the Establishment Act setting up your commission. Sometime in twenty nineteen, you came back to parliament to amend just two or three provisions of seven zero three. If I recall, we only amended section eighty-one and section ninety-six A and B in respect of the small-scale mining regarding the introduction of mining support services. So we had the opportunity in twenty nineteen to have, as it were, rehabilitated the law the way it is. But let me take you back to Act seven zero three. If you go to seven zero three, in fact, there are actually three categories of license in. The provisions from thirty-four to thirty-eight speaks of prospective license, which you spoke about. Then we have mining lease, which does with sections thirty-nine all the way to sixty-one. Then there's a whole provision, a whole section on small-scale mining from section eighty-one to about section ninety-nine, three provisions of which we amended with nine nine five in twenty nineteen. Now, in Act seven zero three as amended by nine nine five, you are empowered under section hundred. It gives you the power clearly as a commission to ensure the proper implementation of the law. And what does that say? You are supposed to regulate these activities. So you taught me, so I'll use this example for you. For instance, where there are unlicensed drivers on our roads and highways, the DVL cannot say that because there are too many vehicles and too many drivers, I am unable to deal with those who are not licensed. So I am incapacitated, I'm leaving that for the police to do. No, they still would deal with the licensing and allow the police to do snap check and check those who are licensed to be on the road. So it is in that vein that I expect you to respond to the issues that, well, if we have licensed entities and persons to engage in small-scale mining, that is all you are empowered under the law to do. Those who are engaged in illegal mining, let the security forces in conjunction with your enforcement officers implement or ensure the implementation of that. But I'm not hearing that from you. Then again, two, if you look at the manual that you provided, which is a further guide to implement the LI twenty-one seventy, I think twenty-twelve, if I recall.
Twenty-one seventy-six.
Yeah, twenty-one seventy-six. It is further to fine-tune the regulations in there. It's a beautiful guide, but again, it does not affect the menace that is confronting us. Now, as the regulator, as we speak, and the scenarios you painted, if small-scale mining is not supposed to be undertaken in a certain geographical bayou, it is your responsibility to ensure that it doesn't happen. So the act defines what a mineral is. And because you are authority in this matter, I don't want to be led by it, but for the sake of our viewers and our listeners, if you go to the interpretation section of the law, even water is a mineral as defined by the law. Gravel, like you mentioned, is a mineral. Sand winning that is taking place all over the place is a mineral. And so to win sand, you need a permit from you, and assemblies are also charging their forms of permit and all that. But if you gauge the mood of the nation, it is the uncontrolled pollution of our water bodies, especially the penchant to focus on extracting gold from our, from the alluvium, which is the bed of our streams and rivers, to the extent that some of these activities lead to diversion of the water course. People are creating their own meanders for the rivers and digging up the gold. As the regulator and implementer of the law, you should be asking for perhaps more enhanced powers. That is what I think you should be considering, pursuant to section hundred, that as part of my functions of office, in ensuring that, for instance, under the functions, I'm mandated to advise the minister, for instance, under section two-two-B on minerals. Now, I have detected that a lot of mining activities are ongoing that is affecting or polluting our water bodies, which ultimately affect the quality of the water that we drink and affect the welfare of the people. So I need enhanced powers. Enhanced powers. You know that immigration people, they used not to bear arms, but they came back to parliament and said, once there's a heightened sense of terrorist attacks that may cross our borders, they also should be allowed by parliament to bear arms. Now they bear arms and patrol our borders. So I think that you should also be asking for enhanced powers, saying that, look, to be able to deal with these menas, I don't have to be relying on armed-bearing security forces to be able to do this, because I'm being disappointed. If I issue a license that a mining operation should take place in a cadaster plan A, and you go in situ, you go on the ground, and they are not doing it, they moved away, because, like you said, those who have introduced these petty technologies, they go on the ground, they do pipi, and they see that they're all bearing gold rather than here, but it is more in another location, they move there, they do it there. You should be able to bring them back, that the license based upon which the cadaster plan was issued is not to cover zone A, but it is to cover zone B. If you want to change your plan, you must come back. So it is those powers that I want you to think of and ask for, so that you can be a more effective regulator. And you also will be surprised that the level of degradation and the nudation of the environment is not really by the illegal miners alone. Even the small-scale miners that you have licensed, by the nature, by the sheer nature of their operations, they are also degrading the environment. And in breach of the law, they are not reclaiming. They are hopping, they hop, they degrade, they hop, they move to another place and they leave their land as degraded, and it becomes a death trap. Farmers are going to their farms and their people are falling in and they are dying. So, senior IC, let me put this to you. As we speak, what immediate steps can your commission take to, as it were, stop persons who are not supposed to be engaged in small-scale mining? Because I think that's what the people want to hear. Then two, what steps can you take to disengage from issuing licenses that encourage operations in alluvial areas or areas that borders or abates our water bodies? Because you mentioned, you gave an example that if the call on a wholesome stop of small-scale mining, if it's enforced, then somebody who is properly licensed and is operating in a highland area somewhere or far away from the basin of any river at all will be disadvantaged and unfairly so. And I agree with you. And finally, you spoke about identifying designated small-scale mining areas for the thousands of young men and women who are engaged in it. But that is your function. That is what the commission is supposed to do, and perhaps bring it to parliament pursuant to the Act seven zero three as amended by nine nine five, for parliament to also approve of. So you can even pilot it, that from next year, we want to do, we want to identify the zones and do a pilot. You move the people in the underworld structured and regulated mechanisms for them to engage in the small scale, whether open cast or slightly deep surface mining, to see how it goes. Because I think that that model too, you have to pilot it before it can be rolled out in all the areas in the country. And so these are the tricky things, everyone to deal with the issue, there are many, but the people, people are listening to you. And the mood of the country is that something reasonably can be done. And what it is, you as the regulator, let's hear you. I thank you.
Chair, thank you very much, and I'll respond to the three questions. Chair, illegalities as far as what is annoying all of us, the thirty-four million Ghanaians, including persons unborn, comes from two categories, and I'll be honest with members here. Persons who don't have the requisite authorizations, approvals, howsoever described, who are going there and doing what they don't have the authority to do. In other words, you've not been permitted to do it. So for example, you get into the forest, you are not licensed, and you are doing it. That is one. By far, that is what is common. And two, chair, I'll be sitting here lying to you to say that persons who have not been licensed, some of them have not fallen for the law. So the illegality comes from two sources. Some people who have been given license and have strayed, that is true. And then those who don't have any license and they are also working, that is wrong. Chair, a few things here, like Honorable Dafiam Opo said, if there's anything, maincom rather need resources, which I'm getting anyway, nobody can say it's enough, resources, tools and resources to make us more efficient. That's a fact. But you see, he referred to, his first question was, persons who are working illegally, is it not our duty to assist the security agencies to stop them? Chair, there are two things happening here. One, license is not issue to anybody to mine a water body. So in the first place, anybody who goes to the water body to go and mine is engaged in a criminal activity. We need to, we need to, we need to be clear about that, is engaged in a criminal activity. If we have to give any special permit for anybody to do anything in a water body, is what we do for VR, that from time to time, they come for this special permit to dredge the estuary, to allow this water sinis that host the bihazia parasite to go away. We do that, and that's a property. Outside that, there is no way we'll tell you, we'll give you a license to go and mine a mineral in a water body. We don't do that. So anybody who gets into the water body is involved in our legality. Now, chair, to the chair, Honorable Dafiam Opo, so when somebody gets up and enters a brim, and typically they go in the night, you know, like eleven, ten there, and then by four AM, they file out, they go into the night. Once the minerals commission makes it known to the appropriate security agencies that this person, you know, people are working here at nine and all those things, our job ends there. So I struggle a little bit when we are, again, I use a conongo example. So the district officer of Minas Commission goes around, that is his job, go around and monitor operations, ensure that persons that have been licensed follow the law. Some do breach, and it's his duty to exert the appropriate punishment, okay? And then he turns upon an activity or an area where people are mining. There are two things he will do, like the conongo one that is by the roadside. He reported to the district assembly and said that, I found this activity, it is close to the road, we have not licensed it. So you are bringing it to attention to take action. So Honorable Dafiam Opo, like you said, that is a role of the commission. He's informed the district assembly. So what the district assembly is supposed to do is to organize appropriate security, go and stop that activity. As head of DICEP, you understand that, yeah, as head of DICEP. If we have to, like, seek for more powers, like you are saying, to bear arms and all those things, then government police will have to change, and that will be too much for us. I mean, look at the number of water bodies in this country, and respectfully, forestry people bear arms. So how are people entering the forest to do what they are doing, where they don't have a license? It is different if people have not got all their license, they've entered the forest. So I will not ask government, give us powers to go and bear arms and all those things. And then one more example, we have reported severally that behind a Yenam police station, people are doing stuff there which we have not permitted. So how come that the police is not taking action?
To assist CEO. CEO, you see, I've been privileged to serve on the Public Accounts Committee, and so the auditor, the auditor, as part of his annual audit, sometimes flag some of these issues, so they come before us. You'll be surprised to hear that the forestry commission is also complaining, that when they confront these persons and entities deep within their forest cover, they are able to exhibit licenses supposedly emanating from your commission, permitting them to engage in the activity. So what do they do? So, no, so I'm just trying to bring these matters to your attention, that whilst you seek to rely on the forestry commission and other security services to help you enforce and be more effective in the performance of your functions under the law, there appears to be a lacuna. That is why I think that if you ask for enhanced powers, then all of you could be operating in a coordinated manner to dealing with the matter, so that when a prospective galamse is found at dead of night, like you indicated, in a certain, let's say, close to a riverbed with excavator and all those apparatus machinery about to operate, then you cannot, it cannot be saying that you granted him the license, because the forestry officer is unable to determine whether the license granted, the cadaster map covers the area where it's been located immediately or not. It takes a bit of days. By the time they come back, the degradation has been done, and the course is lost.
I'm very happy you, Honorable Dafiam Opo, asked this question. Let me explain the forestry thing, then I'll go back to the other one, so that I can close the chapter on your first question, then deal with the other two. Chair, for anybody to work lawfully in a forest reserve to explore and mine, these are the approvals a person is required. You need a mineral right, a license, you have to have that. You need a forestry entry permit, that is given by the forestry commission. Forestry, they must, they might give you an entry permit, that you must have a forestry entry permit. Then you have to have EPA permit, you have to go through a certain rigor, they work with the forestry commission on that. Then apart from that, and in any case, EPA sits on our license committee, EPA and lands commissions on that. So you need a license properly, so-called, you might have obtained your forestry permit, you must have EPA permit. Then apart from that, you need an arrangement with forestry commission and say that, if I destroy the size of this respectful meeting room, maybe I'm going to replant three, four times. That's the kind of thing Newmont has in Achin, that's the kind of thing Chirano has, that's the kind of thing Ghana Bosai since nineteen forty-one has. So I'm not passing the buck, and that's not my nature. I, yes, so I'm coming to answer your question. So if somebody shows up with a license in the forest, maybe the one Honorable Suini and maybe Honorable Okujeto constantly raise about, and forestry commission says that, listen carefully, respectfully, the forestry commission says that Minas, he is having Minas Commission license, then respectfully, that forestry commission officer is failing us. Because for him to allow that activity, it means that they should have given him a forestry entry permit, and forestry entry permit is not even enough. When the person, the person must have had EPA, so did you show him EPA? Did you show him forestry entry permit from his own boss? And in any case, has he shown him that formal arrangement to replant and all those things? So if the forestry commission says that, oh, he's holding a license signed by the minister, the commission of Minas Commission, so we are helpless, he has failed us. Because his entry permit must even allow that activity in the first place. The person might show, so even if somebody has a license showing that, oh, I'm holding this license sixteen kilometers square, that allows me to explore mine draw Forest River or any forest reserve in Ghana, okay? For the person to work lawfully, all the other permits must have been granted, and even if it is a mining lease, it should even be ratified, like Newmont and Co. So if all the approval, even if the ten approvals are required, he has nine, he has not got one, because of the sensitive nature of the forest, if he goes there to do anything, that is illegal mining. So all those people who are displaying Minas Commission or license, you know, signed by the minister, and they have not got all the other authorization, anything that they indulge in his galamse. So that forestry officer who tells you that, oh, he has flagged a license, and that's why we are lying, or that is enjoying, then it means he has done his work well. Where is his own forestry permit? Where is the EPA one? And if it's a lease, where is the ratification? You see, so all those people who are showing licenses that they have the right to mine their forest, their right is not completed because all the other authorizations have not been granted yet. So that is the explanation for the forestry one. But then, let's come back to the other one. So those guys that Minas Commission has brought to the attention of MUSEC or DICEP, depending on where it is, the Yenam one, for example, that galamse is taking place behind the police station. So it's like, we've told you, galamse is having a job, sits under proper, that is behind this new block. Respectfully, Honorable Okujeto and Chair of this respectful, honorable committee, the Minas Commission officer has done his work. I am not saying that we have also not let Ghana down, or we are hundred percent right, because they have told you that there are instances where people have had all their rights and they have made mistakes. Of course, that's why they are inspectors. So I wanted to understand the forestry thing very well. If you don't have all the licenses like Newmont and all the permits, anything that you do is illegal. So you saw our position and our press releases on when Honorable Suini and Co. came out about some people having licenses and going into the forest. We came out and said, look, you need X, Y, Z in addition to what the ministers are. If you don't have that, it is galamse or illegal mining, it's implicit. And I think that clears the air. So somebody should be asking, how come that company, for example, holds a lease properly, so-called, which is just one step, and he has not got forestry entry permit, or even if he has fourteen entry permit, he has not got EPA, he has not got the offset and other arrangements, and he has entered. That's one aspect of the Ghanaian conundrum. The other aspect is where people don't have anything and they invade. That is not for me to answer, respectfully, it's for the forestry commission to answer. But we, together, we go to the Newmont site, because we also need permission to enter forest reserve. We can't enter forest reserve unless you get permission from the forestry commission. But we are allowed by virtue of the arrangement to enter Newmont Achin, to enter Ghana Bosai, to enter Chirano, to make sure that they are following the law. Occasionally, there may be slips here and there, it's up to us to correct them, some warning, some fine, some we have to shut down and cool. So the forestry thing, it's, that's how it works. Anybody who has not got all their permits, which I've explained, is engaged in illegal mining. I don't know how else we can deal with that. So that gentleman who perhaps said that, oh, the person has flagged Minas Commission for mining license, and that's why they are lying, or that's why there are tickets to place. Respectfully, let me say, just like if you go to a small-scale license site and there are infractions, you can hold it responsible that we've not been compliant and making sure that they follow the law. That is it.
Yeah, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Chief, in issuing the license, we have the EPA, then you have the forestry, is it forestry entry permission?
The entry.
Then forestry.
Yes.
Who come in.
Uh-huh. And so if the person has to go there, which of you issue your license last? Do you inspect EPA, the entry license, before you issue yours as the final license, or you issue your license for the operator or for the miner to go and get the Or you issue your license for the operator or for the miner to go and get the other documents?
Chair, typically, typically, what happens is that you must have a forestry entry permit. Or if the person comes straight to the Minas Commission, let me put it this way, the entire Ghana is in a cadesta. The moment you show me a map with coordinates right now and we plot it into our system, I can tap you on top of my head that this is a forest reserve. It's a wildlife area, et cetera. And we do three things, some areas are no-go areas. For example, Kojai, that's a nature reserve, we tell you no-go area, you can't do anything there. Shai Hills, you can't do anything, we tell you. If forestry people allow you, that's a problem, but they will not even allow you. Number two, we ask you, we write to the forestry commission and say, this person has put in application to explore or mine for good or disminion in this area. We have noticed a force within this forest reserve, so we are bringing to our attention for the necessary authorization approval. So forestry commission will write to us and say that they have no objection and we considering the application. If they say that, then that's okay, we will process. He will get a license, like the ones you normally refer to our, our website. When he finishes, here, and normally the entry permit, I don't know, I think some are for one year renewal, some are two years, they, they have their style and doing it. So when you finish, you go back to forestry commission. You need to sit with them and have all those arrangements and say, okay, now that you have, you can enter, we need to sit with you and see what will happen if you start mining, where you can mine, where you can not mine and all those things. You need to do that, it's like us, we also do that. When you're not in the forest reserve and you apply for a mining license, let's say the size of this room, let's granted that this area is twenty square kilometers. You still have to come back to us after everything and we have to do what we call a mining area. So you realize that if you go to some of the mining areas, some of the communities are still farming and working in some areas. Yes, we declare, so your lease is this table, but where me and Madame Jaga are sitting is your mining area, we approve it for you. And then you have to do account of all the miners and all that, because we don't understand how come that if you be here for the first five years, you have to encumber the whole place. So allow them to farm, let them do their own thing. When you are coming to get there, you give them notice, they move, you compensate them. That's how the system works. You understand the hair? Then you go to the full rigors of EPA. And then where it has to be for extraction, you come to this or guest house for ratification. So like Honorable Suini has been saying and the issues he has been raising, I tend to agree with him on many of the things. If you don't have all these approvals and you find any legality, if you find any person doing anything there, please, respectfully, it is illegal mining. And normally two things happen. It could happen that some of those people there are the people involved. And then there are also record, chair, that there have been instances where somebody has obtained a lease, he's going through the other processes to acquire the other rights for him to be compliant and even starting anything where some people have entered. So there have been instances, a lot of them, where people who are not connected to that company, because if you find illegality here, it is very easy to say that Martin Isim Mining Enterprise is the one that has a license, so he's the one involved. There are instances where some of them have been doing that. And there are instances to where the people who are involved there are not the people who did that. Somebody else invaded because perhaps he thought there is gold there. So even the forestry thing, there are two things happening there, where he has not obtained all his rights and he entered. That's Galamsia or illegal mining. Or where he's waiting to get all his rights, some people entered that are not traced to him. I mean, there are reports like that and forestry too has come out. So it is very easy to blame, let's say Martin Isim Mining Company, because in the cadesta, he has a license, but he was not in responsibility. And there have been instances to where people have also entered that are linked to that company. So that is what happens. So anybody, let me repeat, Honorable Okujeto, Chair of this committee, anybody who has not got all these rights, even if you have forestry entry permit, you have your offset arrangement, you have your mining area, you have the license, it has been ratified, you don't have EPA. If you do anything, it's illegal mining. We need to understand all these things carefully. So that is my answer to the other one. And then Honorable Dafemekwa, the other one that you said, the designated areas have been there since Professor Kilapa nineteen eighty-six, and that is where our problem started from. He said it together with Kofi Ansa, these five regions in Ghana that have barely five hundred thousand people now going forward since eighteen ninety, give money to Geological Survey and do geological investigation or else we wake up to the problem that we are seeing now, nobody paid a hit. From five regions, now we are starting with thirteen regions. And then the other aspect is that is technologies that are changing everything. Now, gold price is also accounting for the recent surge. Why gold prices are the highest in record history? So, chair, let me say that in Chi, areas where even people have done Galamsia two, three years ago, they have gone back, they are now washing. Because last year the price was like thousand, eight thousand, eight nine, I'm talking about two six, it's heading to two seven. So even, people are even going back to abandoning areas. And then he said something, perhaps I gave example, maybe he didn't get beat. We have started something barely two, three years now. Bonfa Block, Dunqua Block and Newtown, not Accra Newtown, there's a place in Western Region called Newtown. These are areas where parliament has approved for us, eh, Honorable Attia Chair and their committee until the split recently. We are piloting. Umat is doing some, eh, Geological Survey is doing some, the results are looking encouraging. Some in the next six months, one year, we will give it out. If we have been doing this since nineteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-nine, we'll not be where we are now. And trust me, until we do more of this, the problem will not go away. The solution to illegal mining is pouring millions of dollars into Geological Survey because they are the government explorer to do all this block. They block out years and there are over twenty thousand all over Ghana. They do the exploration and then we give it out. Other than that, that fourth thing that I said is what we are doing now. Areas graciously given to us by landscape people that, eh, Mungu to support the Galamsia fight, we are doing it like Ashanti and Co recently pressed us. Areas where we have canceled. Then the third one is areas where the mining companies are saying that it is not big enough for us because they like it be, so Minas Commission take it with a standard report, we'll do it for them. And then the last one, the miners getting up and saying, look, this is my code, they check it for me, if it's free, we license. Those are the ones we are granting. So for now, this is what is going on until this Bonfa Block Dunqua and the Newtown Board gets ready. The wet bank is funding the Dunqua one and it's quite advanced. But this is just peanuts, you are talking about thirteen regions, millions of people waiting to get licenses. So that is it. The, so that answers the designating one, we have started some pilot where it's working, but that's the tip of the iceberg. And then let me wrap up on the last bit. I don't think, knowing what I know, two, twenty-two and a half years at Mincom, I'll be asking for more powers, let's say to bear arms, to carry guns and all those things, because it's not something we can do. I don't need powers to go and be beating for people from water body, we are not trained for that. I would rather ask for more money for Geological Survey to do more of the eh eh, geological investigations so that we can give it out for people. I'll ask for more money to build more offices and more eh, what do you call the tools? Okay, to even hire more people, we are hiring anyway, but not to bear arms. Because do I need arms to go and evict Galamsia people behind a police station? And here, Mincom did not recommend police station. I don't need arms to go into Prabang, that is somebody else's job. Take me on, on persons who have issued licenses and are not doing their writing, which I'm saying is also part of the Galamsia thing. But our headache, the biggest issue is the water body and the forest people are entering without the appropriate authorization. That's a problem. The anger of Ghanis is that Minos look alike Pra and Kobe and Brim, which I didn't see two thousand and two second when I joined Mincom, Pra was not looking like this. So I'm a witness to what is happening. I didn't see this in Brim, they were doing the koli, 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 koli on land. Then all of a sudden, they are entering the water body. So how do people enter water body at ten eight, ten P M and come out at four A M? What can Mincom do? All that Mincom can do is, you know, to report it and then Resek and Musek, this will fit. If we need to change the architecture, fine, but I will not ask for me to, eh, my officers to bear arms, no. Some areas, when, you know, we get information through MPs, journalists, citizens, vigilante and Co that, hey, Mincom, we've seen this activity here. I call the officer, sometime the officer tells me, sir, people are bearing arms, I will not go. I can't go there. Like that area, I said that policeman was humiliated last year, we all saw it on television, he's in the ancient area there. How do you expect a young, brilliant officer, Minas Commission engineer, to go into that environment where people are bearing arms, those boys that were carrying arms there? He can't go. So those areas he cannot go, when he tells me what I do is that my job is related to the appropriate security agency and say, my officer says that this area, there's an illegality going on because he didn't process the papers or documentation, the people are carrying arms. So it is up to the security people to deploy and go and, and do that. They should do that and operation, Vagan and all those things. So there's a limit, Honorable Dafemekwa, to what we can do. I will not ask for more powers, I would rather ask for more, and I said parliament has been gracious. Look, twenty twenty-three, our budget was three hundred ninety-nine, four hundred million. We came back and asked for more money, you approved six thirty million for us. As I speak, we have raised enough money, we're almost getting to five hundred and we'll make sure we do it by the close of the year. I intend to raise my budget to about seven fifty, so that we will quit more people, build more offices, train our people. But the water body, it is somebody's job to go and evict them.
Don't you therefore concede that if this house keeps approving more resources for you? And yet, the security agencies who must do their job, don't do their job. We are not getting value for money. We perhaps should even stop these approvals of more money for you. Don't you, don't you think that there's a fundamental issue we need to address, the missing link? The security agencies not doing their work? Let's call them out, let's ensure that they do their work before perhaps we come back to giving you more resources for more offices, more staff, if at the end of the day, it will amount to nothing. And people who have to enforce those who bear arms, who must really protect the territorial integrity of our country, preserve our river bodies, are not doing their work, then what is really the point in always, and you are right, according to our records here, um, you have about six hundred and thirty million CD approval eh, for this fiscal year, and it is up from, from previous years. But are we getting value for money if the security services are not doing their work?
Chair, on the first part, I agree with you. Second one, respectfully, I'll say no. You saw the example I gave earlier on before Honorable Suini walked in. So as I said, Dixon Achindiba is an officer in Borga. Two weeks ago, he said, boss, I've gone around the Bluesa North and South area. I realized and saw about two hundred people going underground to go and pick gold and all body in an area called Candema and also in the Fumbisi area there. From what I saw, one, they don't have license because if they had license, I will have processed him. I am strongly recommending we formalize them so that they do it proper because the environment and everything that I saw, it's okay. It's underground, it's okay. So can we arrange to send them gold catcher? Can we quickly let them start putting up some structures so that they start working? You see, so the kind of situation you find in Fumbisi and Candema, I would say life must go on. I need those approvals and those resources to assist those who are doing it properly and formalize them and let's support them. I would strongly advise that. But when we stop, so because I've also been hearing people say, now the argument has moved from let's ban it altogether, which we've been able to explain, but of course, people are still entitled to their views respectfully, to saying that let's stop issuing licenses. Honorable Suini, Honorable eh, BT Baba and then eh, Honorable eh, Roxine Dafemekwa, we are in Mali School together. Apart from getting a place for them to work, which may outrate nine over ten, the other one over ten, as cause of his legal man, where I can put about seven points, is the issue of delay in granting licenses. When my minister took office in two thousand and one, the first thing he told me was, ah, Martin, the delay in issuing licenses, it is what is creating the problem. So cut the delays, what do you do, we went online. So what he that would take a year to now, even a week or two, they upload, we do the inspection and then they go to office. When you don't give them the license, what they will do is that they'll go and do illegally. So somebody finds a place, he does his search, the place is free. Chair, hear me out, it is different if we want to go on the route of enforcement and monitoring, which I'm prepared to consider and say perhaps it's one hundred percent perfect. I will not this, I will not lie and sit and say, even those that have license, everything is perfect. I'm lying to you, I'm looking to your face and lying to you. I will not say that because it's not hundred percent correct. If you hold my hand now and say, look, Martin, the Committee of Assurance, we are taking you through all the licensing, you realize that no, it's not all of them that are doing things properly, that's why there's Mungu and, and this, that's not what I'm talking about. If you ask me, is it okay there, what else do you need, what can parliament do, I'll tell you what I think, I've said some of the things already. But to say, we shouldn't grant licenses, there will be a problem. Now I'll tell you what they even do. So somebody picks up a coordinate, he checks in the mining cadesta, he does his checks and everything, he lodges application, even in the course of processing, he starts work. The officer goes to stop and he said, no, because it's typical, what you are allowed to do is that once the officer does the inspection and then forwards him for further processing. The law allows you to erase your camp and your structures and wait, and wait for license supposedly. So when you get it, you work. Like if you go to Atlantic Litium now, they have camps, they have a lot of workers there, they are just waiting for ratification, get their construction permit and start. But now, or the tomb, then they start work. You ask them why, so, boss, those who want to be overly law-abiding, erase their camps and have one or two people there. You tell them, boss, my desk officers tell me, say, boss, you're training illegal fishermen over running their place. You see these Chinese and some of the people, they come bristingly, come and chop his land, some of them, right now you go to my office, people are there can and say, boss, people are chopping my land whilst I'm waiting for license, I don't want to be involved in Galamsia. I've taken the pain to go to the process and now people are chopping my land, there are some land, eh, Chinese people that are chopping my land, some people are chopping my, I don't know where they come from, some of them are even chiefs and co. So I can sympathize that guy, so that guy will tell you that, look, I want to do the right thing, so get me my license. Some other people will say, look, Akwesi Jones came here, came to cry and said, he's waiting for his license because of this delay. One second, all these are real issues. So I become a bit uncomfortable when people say, oh, stop issuing the licenses. Chair, if you don't issue the license, the reverse will be the case. Compliance and enforcement, we can talk about it. Am I not properly equipped? Am I on top of issue, am I having issues? We can discuss it. But I beg you, if we push the issue of not signing the license, because you see, there are more people who are doing the illegality and don't have licenses than people who have licenses. There are more people, there are several thousands who are working there unlawfully. But unlawful means that they don't have the appropriate authorizations, there are people who have licenses. So those who have taken the trouble to come from Tamil, Addidum, Mopeki, Ra Ra, wherever, and say, look, I want to follow the law. If you stop those ones, it means that those thousands will also join that several thousands that are doing it. So there's a little bit of care and caution here, not issuing the licenses. Okay, I have a figure, some data I brought here, I'll share it with Honorable Jaga, sorry, eh, Madame Jaga to look at it. On the number of small scale licenses that have been issued, this is now public knowledge. Twenty seventeen, somewhere around the first quarter, I think we stopped small scale lawfully. What some people are pushing, let's go back to it, we stopped small scale lawfully. In other words, I think Honorable Amewu was the Minister for Lands and Natural Resources then. In other words, I think Honorable Amewu was the Minister for Lands and Natural Resources then. Twenty twenty, uh, uh, what do you call it, uh, twenty seventeen. I was then not the, 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 even Deputy CEO, I think I was a board member. The ban was lifted in twenty-
I think twenty seventeen must be Honorable Chairman.
No. Honorable Amewu was the first Minister for Lands and Natural Resources under President Akufado. Yes.
Before he moved to energy?
Then, yes, before he moved to energy.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so the two completed the four years.
Okay.
And then my current minister came in two thousand and one March. Okay, so the ban came in around twenty seventeen, March, April, there about, and ended somewhere in November twenty eighteen. Honorable, the figure I have here, I have data on small-scale licenses issued from twenty twelve all the way to twenty, no, hang on, twenty twenty-four. You can see that if you look at twenty seventeen, it was seven. Because in twenty seventeen, some were issued before the ban took effect, because the ban didn't start in January. Then if you look at twenty eighteen, on the data I have here, which I'll share with you, I put there nil. In other words, no license was issued in twenty eighteen because we had the ban. Then twenty nineteen went to one oh three, twenty twenty, six two one, twenty twenty-one, eleven, twenty twenty-two, one forty-eight, twenty twenty-three, thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty, nineteen ninety, nine, ninety-three. Total two four two three, these are licenses issued. Sir, that was the year we have the highest record of small-scale production in the history of Ghana. Forty-eight percent of official receipts shows that, forty-eight percent, eh, of official receipt of total gold produced in Ghana in twenty eighteen came from small-scale. That was the year we toppled South Africa and became the largest production. The records are there, PMC, forty-eight percent, and that was about two point two billion dollars when it was banned. Because they were producing and it was all, uh, uh, illegal, whether, nobody had license. They were producing and for some reason, PMC was also processing the receipt. Because those is when you produce, you take it to PMC, it is shipped to your clients predominantly in Dubai. That's what happened in this country. You see, in fact, that year, small-scale will have toppled last year, but for the ban because a lot was smuggled. And small-scale still goes on anyway, small-scale still goes on. As we speak, as at June, the total number, the amount of gold exported from small-scale official is two point seven. If you ask me from where I sit, based on my experience, two, three times that is smuggled because of the tax. It was reduced from three to one point five. Uh, we pushed him for one, my minister went to cabinet with one, but he got one, uh, one point five. They still take a lot of gold to Taka, sorry, to Taka and Co, to, uh, Ivory Coast, and then he's also going to Togo, even Benin, and then he used to go to Burkina too. And now Burkina Faso people are here, are bringing. As to whether it's ending up here or we are using as a conduit, I don't know. Other than that, this is how it was working. You see Burkina Faso, the tax was one percent, our own used to be three. Then, let me just do ordinary street Ghanaian economies, which you all understand. So he takes the gold, especially our brothers up north, Apa is Apa West Savannah, there's a lot of gold there. Or even gold is not box size, he can put it in his pocket. A kilo is now what, getting to hundred thousand or whatever, he puts it in his pocket. And there is like this cocaine Mexican Colombia cartel, they know each other. These Indians, uh, they are all over the place, buying and cutting garnish. So he gets, he courses Burkina Faso. Okay, granted, he bribes the officers at the border there, the security, one percent. He gets to Burkina Faso, he pays a Burkina Faso one percent tax, so it is treated as Burkina Faso what? Gold. He still comes back one percent better off, why will he pay the three percent here? And remember after the three percent, he paid the Mingcom zero point something, he paid the PMC processing charge, he has, he has set up offices, he has to pay workers. So effectively, it is not there. So in that year, two thousand and one May, when the tax was introduced, uh, we lost roughly one million ounces at the expense of our environment, that's what happened. Now the tax was brought to one point five, but people are still smuggling. So I tell people, there's only one way by which you can end smuggling. You have to remove the incentive that allow people to take it across the border. Because the Indians is what they are doing, they go to Taka, they are all over the place. Uh, if the gold today is two thousand six hundred or whatever, they pay premium. You understand that? They, they, they will pay higher than what the ordinary Ghanaian dealers will buy it because the Indian guy will take it across the border. You understand that? So if the Ghana will get a discount of three percent, which is quite common in the industry, the Indian will even pay higher than that. So whereas the Ghana is prepared to pay two CDs, the Indian is prepared to pay four CDs because he wants, he will evade tax and take it across the border. These things are happening. You saw that documentary when some gold left airport. If there's any place that is supposed to be more secure, it is that place. What happened? And it's very easy to smuggle gold, very easy. So these are things that are happening on the ground. So Mingcom, enhancing our powers, maybe more tools, if anything, as I said, they've increased our budget by two hundred and thirty million Ghana cedis, from four hundred last year to six thirty, we will raise it. That's why we are able to start construction of ten offices. Okay, we hire more engineers, et cetera. But this forestry thing, it is more than what people think. So respectfully, don't just look at the, uh, the Mingcom website and see the forest reserve forests and conclude that people are going to mine the forest. If that person engages in any activity and has not got the other three or four EPA, Forest Unit permit, the offset arrangement is illegal. So that answers in brief the three questions that Honorable Dafamme Po put to me. Thank you very much, sir.
Uh, Mr. Yisi, I need to do this. And before I do that, let me lay the foundation based on your submissions. Very respectfully, listening to you carefully, one gets the impression that you believe that the status quo should remain so that we find a way of resolving the crisis with the current conditions. Why do I say so? You have talked about, about three million people who are depending on small-scale mining. The economic benefits to these three million people. Then you have also painted a chaotic situation where if you don't issue the licenses at, at the rate at which you are issuing the licenses, then the illegal miners will take over. Listening to you carefully, one will have thought that the chaotic situation, the jungle system which we have now, where even people who decide to go through due process and to obtain all the licenses, and I have L I two four six two here. If you look at the first shadow of L I two four six two, in terms of the conditions that these miners have to meet after obtaining the mineral right, before any mining can be done, they must obtain an environmental permit under the Environmental Protection Agency Act nineteen ninety-four, act four nine zero, and the Environmental Assessment Regulations nineteen ninety-nine, L I one six five two. They must also obtain a water use permit from the Water Resources Commission under the Water Resources Commission Act nineteen ninety-six, act five five, five two two, and Water Use Regulations two thousand and one, L I one six nine two. They must also secure a mining operating permit from the Inspectorate Division of the Minerals Commission under the Minerals and Mining Health Safety and Technical Regulations, L I two one eight two of twenty twelve. Then they must also secure a forestry entry permit from the Forestry Commission under the Minerals and Mineral, Minerals and Mining Act, pardon me, two thousand and six, at seven zero three, the Forestry Commission Act nineteen ninety-nine, act five seven one. You are telling this committee that even before they meet these regulations, there are many instances where the illegal miners encroach, take over their concession. And so sometimes, seeing what is happening, they cannot wait. And so you say that sometimes you have sympathy for them for not waiting and, 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 and also jumping into the fray and engaging in an illegality. Is this not the reason why we should just stop everything? And us organized labor, the coalition against the mining crisis, the Catholic Bishop Conference, the Apostolic Fathers, all the young people of our country who have been demonstrating over the last, uh, few weeks, civil society organizations, what everybody is saying is that we are in a crisis. So it cannot be business as usual. Something ought to be done. You have talked about our fellow citizens who are mining in the north and other parts where they don't have river bodies, saying that it doesn't concern them, uh, why should they be affected? We all know that it affects all of us. We know that, that it will affect them. I have the hazard here, the Minister for Water and Sanitation, countless occasions complaining about the turbidity levels and how cost of processing water keeps going through the roof. They want more money from parliament, the money is not available in our country. And Ghana Water is saying very soon, do import water. Can these fellow citizens who are mining elsewhere afford this imported water? And then the health hazards. So because of the financial benefits for some three million people, the over thirty million should suffer. So, Mr. Yisi, we want to situate this discussion within the context of the crisis we face now. And it cannot be a business as usual discussion. We want a radical approach, a new way of addressing the menace. Because if not, if it's just business as usual, we'll finish today's proceedings, the recommendations we'll send to parliament, to the plenary will be the same old caboodle and nothing will change. I talked about what we want to do. Over the weekend, we have been visiting our river bodies, just this weekend, and we brought samples here. This is the Vota River, which is the cleanest, uh, which is how really all our river bodies should look like. Uh, we have here the, the Subin River. And, Mr. Yisi, the Subin River. Yes, in the Kumasi area, in the, in the Ashanti region. Uh, we have River Ofing, you know. Uh, I'm sure viewers will think that we are preparing to take Milo or coffee, you know. This is the Birim, the Birim River. This is the Ewinne River. Uh, we also went to the Pulé River. And we couldn't find hope anywhere, there was no succor, no solace everywhere we went to, this is Manfi. When we went to Pra, also terrible. The Odah River, no hope, and Cobra was even worse. Then River Ofing. And this is the Huni, the Huni River. So, Mr. Yisi, this is, this is what we are dealing with. It's only the Vota River that gave us a little hope, you know, even, even that, even that we are hearing that it is just a matter of time because the solar area, we are told that, uh, the white water is beginning to interface and defile the Vota River as well. So, Mr. Yisi, the Ghanaian people seeing this don't expect their leaders, all of us include, inclusive, all of us. This one is not, we, we don't have to, we all have to take collective responsibility. Because as parliament, we are also approving these policies, these, uh, resource allocations, um, these institutions who come to report to us and justify why a certain allocation was properly utilized. We've been doing all these anti-Galamsi operations for years with this house as approved, running into billions. And every year, we appear to be complicit somehow when we approve, uh, judicial use of the previous year's resources and then give the institutions more resources to go and stop Galamsi. And yet, this is where we are as a country. So, Mr. Yisi, we want you to really provide new solutions. How can we stop this? How can we get all our rivers? And they are all gone, all our rivers are gone, except the Vota River, which, uh, we are told is just a matter of time. So this is the context, this is the crisis we face and it affects all of us. Whether where you are mining is not close to a river or not, whether you are not engaged in mining at all, like most of us here. We will drink water, we will buy food, today we'll be having a lunch break. Uh, I don't know, uh, the restaurant that, uh, uh, Madame Giaghe ordered our lunch from, what kind of water they used? We don't know where the water came from. We will have our lunch break, uh, with fish that we don't know which of the rivers they came from. And we will be consuming all of these, these, uh, chemicals, the cyanide, the mercury is going into our system, the doctors are warning that we are surely candidates for cancer. And now we are also told that dialysis patients are at an all-time high. The renal unit at Collebu is under pressure, you know. We can't even take care of the, of the bills and subsidize the patients. So, Mr. Yisi, this is the crisis we face. And this committee, we don't want to, you know, hear the same business as usual, with all due respect. We trust your expertise, your competence, but this is a crisis we are dealing with. We are faced with an existential threat and we want to hear you. If the Ghanaian people seeing this and they conclude that leadership has failed them, particularly the Minerals Commission has failed them, what will be your response and what is a new paradigm respectfully that you are proposing as the way forward, as the chief regulator of the mining space?
Sir, thank you very much. Sir, I'll raise four fundamental issues and I want members to listen carefully and, and then look at it from a different angle. Sir, let me repeat. Until we put money in geological investigations and adopts a more aggressive approach in investigating all the several thousands of blocks that Minerals Commission has designated as blockad areas with the view to investigating them and then defining all bodies so that we give it out to the small-scale miners, then we should forget about the issue. Because the problem will not go away. So if you ask me- So if you ask me, one radical approach, one aggressive approach is that what we've not done well or what we have jockeyed for the last thirty years is what we have to do now. That we have to take money, give it to geological survey. As I said, some pilots are being done, Bumfa Block, Dungku and Newtown, but it's just a drop in the ocean. Looking at the thirteen regions we have to
Mr. Yisi, do you have an idea how much we will need for that geological survey?
If you, even if you ask me, anything around ten million dollars, you know, and the money you have to begin every year, we can even start with five million dollars. See the equivalent of five million dollars, ten million dollars, even if you use sixteen, that's how much? One sixty million? Did I get it right? Yeah, even hundred million to geological survey, because they have the equipment, they've got a new rig now. They have the equipment and they are not the only people who can do it, apart from geological survey, which is the government's explorer. And because of the sheer numbers involved, we are no longer talking about five regions, we are talking about thirteen. Even my own Uti, we are beginning to see gold now. I was home just this weekend to celebrate the young festival, because I'm the chief of Rara. We don't have a primary chief, so as Coentin, you are in charge. And people are saying, oh, Nana, there's good all over this place. My grandfather used to tell me, and my late father.
So, 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 Nana, just for
So my first point, radical
Yes, we'll come to your point, just for our record. You keep talking about the thirteen regions, thirteen regions. We need to know for our record, what are the three regions that are out?
Getafe, Getafe, even though some mining takes place, we call Qaris are considered mining. And then the two regions where I come from, Volta and Odoti. Yes, I'm talking about gold, because that's a fundamental issue.
So these are the only three
These are the other than that, the others, it's all over the place.
Okay.
Yes, and the radical solution is to embark on aggressive geological investigation. Don't just rely on geological survey. There are several Ghanaian geologists who are registered to provide exploration services to Minerals Commission. Westfield, they are all over the place, Geo Mining, you know, they are all over the place. So we can just give some of the mining, money to geological survey, some to Geo Mining and all these private people to do it. Trust me, if you release a lot of money now, in the next six months, you start seeing areas that we can align sensing. Because what is causing the Havasa digging? Try your arrow, you dig everywhere. So for me, that's number one. We have to start it now aggressively. I'm saying government has released some funds through us for Bumfa, Dungku and Newtown, Newtown as in Western Region. These are being done by Geological Survey and UMAT. So the solution now is to release money aggressively to private people, exploration companies, the universities and Geological Survey, they go out there and all the areas we've designated already, I already know, they start exploring. Six months you start seeing results.
Chairman, just forgive me, I didn't intend to come in at this point, but with your permission, Mr. Isis said earlier that the Geological Survey already has a rig and that it will not cost that much because of the availability of the rig if we were to invest in the Geological Survey. But then in the subsequent submissions, you are suggesting private, you know, geological surveyers. I don't get that, you know, drift. If the state has capacity, why have you all of a sudden, in the same breath, you know, bringing in private developers? Private developers who, by the way, in some cases are even responsible for these troubles that we have.
Let me explain, in a summary, and then the question you posed, basically speaking, the minds of thirty-five millions. He said radical solution. Geological Survey has expertise, but in the situation, Honorable Suini, that we find ourselves through the chair, they can't cover the whole country within this short time for us to start releasing the blocks to these minerals of people who want to work unlawfully. They cannot. They have, they have the, let me explain, please, respectfully. They have the expertise, they have the rig, but I'm talking over several twenty thousand plus square areas designated by Mingcom. They cannot cover thirteen regions within a short time for us to start releasing blocks for them. So I'm saying that whilst they may be investigating the place all over the areas as a radical approach to free up more areas so that results can come out quickly, let's also bring in this season Ghanaian geologists who have, you know, registered with Mingcom to also explore the other areas. Because Geological Survey cannot cover all the sixteen regions within a short time, unless you want to say five, ten, fifteen years. But we are saying radical solution. So they can say, okay, we're going to do part of Ashanti, we're going to do East End, we're going to do this thing. Within six months or one year, we can come out with some deposit that we can give it out to these corporatives and small-scale miners. But if we want it quickly, we need to bring in other people to come and help. That's what, that's what I'm saying. Because we need quick results, the miners will not wait for you. So engage the other explorer. We can start with the Geological Survey, the key mining areas, we know them, Ashanti, Western, Savannah, et cetera. Let them start. You see, the alternative will also to hire more geologists for Geological Survey and give them more resources so that they can cover more areas. But time is of essence if the definition of radicalism is anything to go by. So identify very good, and now geologists are world-class, not just Africa. GeoMan, Westfield, Westfield, all these Ghana, all the last key companies, exploration is being done by Ghanaians. Mineral Exploration Services are near reserve for Ghana, there are several of them. Then you can deepen some of the resources, let's do that. For now, Geological Survey and UMAT. UMAT is doing the Newtown block. The Bumfa and Dungku money is coming from Wedbank and some small from Mingcom, it's not enough. So I'm just talking about timing, or else Geological Survey will take a long time and the numbers will keep going up. And you heard me a short while ago in my introductory remarks, what is even driving the crisis further is a high price. To the standard what have been dumped, what we call tailings and waste, two, three years ago, they are even going back to them. So Honorable Suini, the private thing coming here is for us to quickly get more areas, deal with the huge numbers, since Geological Survey cannot cover more areas. Unless they come and tell us that, oh, maybe we have forty geologists. If we want to cover the whole Ghana, then let's recruit hundred more geologists, which we can get because of our expertise. Then in that case, you say, okay, if we get two hundred geologists, we can do the work ourselves. Can you do that in one or two rigs adult? So that is my suggestion.
Mr. Chairman, I'm actually eager to hear the other three solutions that you will give. But I keep noticing some contradictions that I will want you to clarify before you give us the other three. And I plead that you do that, you know, in very, very, as briefly as possible. I plead that you do that. Now, it seems to me, listening to you, that you are more focused on us issuing licenses to people who apply speedily. Because you think that it is a solution. But even in your submissions, you admit, or you admitted, that some of the people with licenses also engage in irresponsible mining. And an example which you referred to without mentioning the name, Ozakontan Mining with the Tano Nimmimi Forest and others, who may have licenses but may engage in irresponsible mining or even go to places to mine that their licenses don't cover. So I'm wondering how licensing is automatically a problem? I mean, it is automatically a solution. When the facts on the ground is actually that people with licenses have also been caught engaging in irresponsibility. So your push for, okay, let's get Geological Service to rapidly, you know, map up the area so we quickly issue licenses to people as a solution, makes me rather think that you, it is about licensing irresponsibility. Or just because people engage in irresponsibility, give them licenses to continue engaging in it and that makes it right? I don't think it does.
Honorable Chair, I love this question and I will explain, I'll be very blunt and honest. The example you use may not be right for this one. Because I heard you mention Akuntan Mining. I think you saw our press release, which even Martin, people always keep mentioning my name. I've not met him in person, but never mind, I think you also raised it. I mean, it was clear from Minister's response and Minerals Commission information that all the authorization approvals, as I have been explaining repeatedly, were not obtained. So that one, it is settled. Two, Honorable Chair and everybody seated here, I will not deceive you. Licensing, licensing is one of the causes of illegal mining. At least I know that for twenty-two and a half years, one of the causes, one, one of the causes. But as I said, I can give you hundred causes of illegal mining, but out of the hundred, the one, the one that is a headache which I keep driving on that if we don't solve, is the one that I've just discussed, the geological survey investigation. And trust me, Honorable Kujeto, if we don't deal with that problem, forget it. Deploy the entire Ghanaian battalion, let's also give arms and everything to some of us as vigilante, the problem will not go away. And by far, it's not everybody who's honest. Why are you having mining behind a police station? Hard is good getting out of this country. Is it everybody that you put there, but we are in this country, Koko gets smuggled? We used to put soldiers across the border, what is happening? I'm not saying I am a saint, but I'm being honest with you and telling you what is on the ground. So for me, geological survey is a solution. And it may not solve the problem overnight, because we refuse to do it over thirty years. It will take some time, but if you want to do it aggressively, to use the word radical, let's start now. Quickly, let's start now, unless we want to say that we don't want to mine mining. We don't want to do mining, we want to ban mining, we don't want it again as a government policy. So apart from geological investigation, which are around now over ten, the other one too is that we have also saying, we are also saying that if you don't license people, they'll go ahead and do it illegally. That is a fact, if you don't license people. And I've said it before, you know, in my introductory remarks, that there are more people doing it illegally than those who are licensed. And the illegal people, there are serious categories, those who don't have licenses, that's the bulk of them, who are doing it without permits. They are there on land, they are there. And then there are people who are mining areas that ordinarily Mingcom per rules will not allow, will not allow you to go into the water body, will not give you license for you to go and do mining in forest success small scale. If the place is hilly, will not allow, the Konongo thing, which is an embarrassment to all of us, we didn't sanction, it will not allow. The officer in his wisdom will not process that area. The officer will not give licenses in between alleys. Because if you take Konongo, Honorable Suini, they dig their houses. That's how you can have the twenty eighteen phenomenon, they dig their houses. Omutu, Mufi and Kasa, the place is water, or they are there digging their houses, alleyway. You saw that report, that UTV car in the safety area, there were chifffins involved. Do you understand that? Or that area there, people are digging their houses and all that. I mean, these are places that people are not licensed. But what I'm trying to say is that, at least, the areas that we find suitable, let's license them. Or else, for example, this kind of mine, full of city thing, if you don't do it, what is the alternative? Then let's go and remove them. But my officer has convinced me that based on his mining engineering knowledge, what he is saying, let's quickly give them gold catcher, move them in and let them start working. I believe in that strongly. What would be the alternative? Get security to go and evade them because they don't have permits. And I'm also supporting that because it's underground. That's the kind of thing we are pushing for. So those areas that are not ecologically very sensitive, quickly help them to do it properly. Assist them and formalize it for them. But this water body thing, there are no apologies.
Yeah, so Mr. Yisi, how do you, how do you explain a situation where from the evidence, looking at the data you have presented and from your own Ghana mining repository? You did indicate a while ago that in twenty twenty-two, when you went round, this was not how our river bodies were looking. Oh, two thousand and two? Yeah, so just for clarity.
Two thousand and two, that's twenty-two and a half years ago, when I was then an assistant legal officer at Minerals Commission. I didn't see this, that's what I mean, not, not two years ago, no.
Okay, so two thousand and two.
Yes, this did not start overnight, two thousand and two, that's twenty-two years. You know, I got a job at Minerals Commission, second April two thousand and two. Yes, that time, we didn't see this kind of thing. In the so-called five regions when Sumoski started, barely hundred thousand people.
Good.
That's what I meant.
Thank you very much. So this really helps me with the question I want to ask. By two thousand and two, according to your mining repository, there were less than a hundred licenses that had been issued. Now, we have a situation where we seem to have a very efficient and generous licensing regime, where you are doing it, you say that in weeks when they apply, you are not allowing delays at all. And we see from the data that more and more licenses are being approved. Indeed, from your repository, we see start dates for mining. You have given the green light for as recent as third October, just last week, third October this year. So the question is, how is it that if the argument is that the more licenses you give, the better the situation in terms of responsible mining? You are bringing everybody into the net so that you can supervise them and then we can have a safe environment? How is it that it is the opposite, the contrary, which is occurring? Where the more licenses you are issuing, the more the degradation, the more the environmental destruction, the more devastation, the more, you know, illegalities we see all over the place? I mean, how is it that the theory, which is, I'm sure, the textbook theory, is not applying in this case, where you are issuing more licenses, all right, but it is not improving the crisis? The crisis is getting worse by the day. How do you explain that?
Chair, let me explain it this way. You see, there are more people who are mining or undertaking what we will call illegal mining, per definition I give you, than those who are lawfully, you know, permitted to do it. What is driving that? There are no areas for them to work. That, I want that settled. And the numbers, as Professor said, within five regions, technology has made all body that he that you couldn't mine, mineable. So all of a sudden, thirteen regions, you find this thing going on, so sheer numbers and people are doing it. So my point is that they're few, that wants to do it lawfully, that want to do it lawfully. If you don't license them, they join the ranks of the several thousands that are doing it unlawfully. That's number one. Number two, there are some areas where, come what may, there is no way a Minerals Commission digital officer will permit you to do it. No Minerals Commission officer will allow you to work in between houses, will allow the Konongo kind of thing. No Minerals Commission officer will give you permit to go and mine directly and mount those shampaw floating devices in Prabima, Cobra. But for some people, they prefer to go to the Prana Cobra. So my argument is that even for those who want to do it lawfully, where the rules permit, if you don't even allow them to do it, they'll join the ranks of those people. That is my argument. Number two, Honorable Chair, there are some areas that we have found that they've started doing it and per the inspection or survey by the officer, the officer realized that, oh, they didn't have the and per the inspection or survey by the officer, the officer realized that, oh, they didn't have the appropriate authorization or permit. But for some reason, if it looks at the area and what they are doing, we can allow them to do it lawfully. So quickly, what do you do? You formalize them and fasten the licenses for them. So for example, I would prefer that the Kandema and then the Fumbisi thing will move quickly, give them the license, give them the gold catcher they are doing on the ground and let them do it lawfully and license them. What would be the alternative if, let's say, we don't allow them? The alternative is go and tell them that they are illegal people, stop it or we'll get you arrested. They may move or you go there, go and arrest a few people or they'll come at night. Other than that, then you have to police the place twenty-four hours. Eh, Nomencom is a security agencies able to police that deep down village there. Are you getting my point? So eh, I want to bring more of the Kandema and the Fumbisi type of thing into the realm of legality. And also those areas that are good to go, we license them or else they can't demand Fumbisi and these areas that we are licensed. If you don't do it, they will dread the several other millions of thousands to continue to do it illegally. In areas, in areas that will not be the position to police.
Just, just a little interjection, very useful, so that we don't uh, forget about this important point. This your Fumbusi eh, Kandema doctrine. Have you looked at the flip side? Can it also lead to more lawlessness? Where illegal operators who say that we too, we are going to start, do whatever we want to do, besiege an area, once we see that we can mine gold here. And then when the Minerals Commission discovers us, they should, they should regularize us. Wouldn't lead to more lawlessness, more impunity. That, that is, that is our fear.
No, Chair, respectfully, no. It's not all areas that we can license. In fact, if you submit a, a cadastrian map, right, and we check it in the system and it's free, when they say a place is free, it simply means that it's not encumbered. It means that potentially a license will be granted over the place. If the digital officer goes to the ground and he doesn't find the place suitable, oh, it's in a, close, close to the water body, it's in a area there, if there's a problem, the town gets flood, etcetera, he will not approve it. So there have been instances where several licenses have been rejected, where the place is free, but we have not granted it. Some people, they go and do it illegally. You see, so the Kandema thing is one out of several cases where you should rather help them get formalization. So it's not a license for lawlessness, no. There are so many policies we will not allow, we've been rejecting. It's too close to the water body, it is, Guam's side is this, is this. But this area, I would think that we should do it for them because you see currently they are using mercury. But we're going to give them gold catcher. So you have discouraged the use of mercury, it's going to recover more, it's going underground. We even helped them sink boreholes like we did for Bongo. This is what we are talking about when we say formalization, which doesn't end today. That's what I'm talking about. So Honorable Kujeto, it's not a license to say, oh, let's go in there and then eh, like the way people are jumping on the la, particularly almost over last key, companies are complaining about people jumping on their concessions, yes. And some officers are not in support of licensing for them because it is just wrong or else, before I realize, will become a disincentive for investment. You know, every prospecting license, people mass on it and they say, we are Minerals Commission, don't worry, yes, you hear, no, that's not what I'm suggesting.
CEO, let me put it this way. Uh, your mandate under the law is very clear. And I'll help on it, that you need enhancement in order to assert your powers. Now, the problem we have is that you have confirmed that any degradation or denuded activity leading to ex, eh, prospecting for gold in a water basin, it's not licensed by you. If, if, if I got it right, it's not licensed by you.
Will not give respectfully to their chair, eh, will not issue a license for anybody to go into the Prabima and mount that thing.
Exactly.
And where even a lawful activity needs to divert water, you have to go to water resources. If you go to water resources, for example, Newmont or even a small-scale person, you, they will ask you to present your license, present your E P or whatever. Then they will come and do an assessment before they will ask you to divert water. So even there's a process to follow. Anybody who does otherwise, Galamsey.
And that diversion is for a brief period, then the water is returned to its, its natural channel.
You see, the law says that you need a water permit to impound, divert or use water. So Water Resources Commission are supposed to use their judgment and say, will not allow you to divert this water or sink a borehole or pass here, do it this way. They, they follow their own rules to do that.
Okay.
And then they will give you certain conditions and say, maybe contain it, you are supposed to do S, Y, Z. That also comes with their own rules.
Uh, that's the point I'm making, that even where they grant that, it will be based upon some conditionalities. Now, what is, what, what has shocked the conscience of the nation? It's not really about the, the licensed small-scale activities. It's about activities surrounding our water bodies. Sometimes in the channel of the water, you know, excavation of diluvium and leading to serious pollution. In some cases, pollution that may not be remedied for a very long time. So as parliament and as a state institution, I think we should be looking at what you can do under your mandate, under your mandate in the, under the law. What you are capable of doing to remedying that in the interim, before we look for a long-term solution. Because if, if, if you say that um, my mandate under the law is A, B, C, D and, and I'm able to carry it out. So other state institutions should be able to come in and do what they have to do. Then I have a problem. Because you are not merely a state entity, you are a regulator. So for any prospection for good from any, any environmental area or any physical area in this country, it has to come under your mandate. So those that do not come under your mandate, which you have been licensed, even though it comes under your mandate, but you haven't licensed, the law also permits you to stop it. Just the point I'm making. So let me again use the analogy. If I'm supposed to be a, a driver on the, on the, on the highways of this country, I am supposed to be a licensed driver. So where I am not a licensed driver, but I find myself behind a steering wheel and I'm, and I'm transporting goods up and down, the DVLA is supposed to look out for me. The road safety institution is supposed to look out for me. The Ghana Police Service is supposed to look out for me and prevent me from conducting that illicit activity on the road or caution me to go and get the license and so that I can, I can be a licensed driver on the road. So the law allows you to regulate those who have been licensed by you to operate and also prevent those who are not supposed to engage in activity.
Chair, you are right. The law allows me to regulate those who are supposed to, eh, 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 I mean, to do it properly and also prevent. Prevention is two ways. Depending on the circumstances, moving from the realm of what? Illegality to legality. There are several bounds. Again, let me repeat what have become a cliche now, Busan of in Busan South situation. It, it, it is clear from the report that we can help them do it well. That's a typical example. I wish all over that will be the place, we will have our place of mind. So that is one part, to prevent it. So I can prevent it by helping them do it well. Some other prevention, the only way I can prevent it is to bring it to attention of somebody to go and stop it. So for example, somebody gets up and mounts a floating device in the middle of Brim and Prabima. The Minerals Commission officer cannot swim. He has not got boots, he has not got all those things. If they are asking us for resources to help, we do. We, we have a budget line to support. So for example, once the officer in Dungwa reports to me and I bring it to attention of the security agencies, Rexek and Koda, oh, there are some people who are inside there or there are some people who are in the Blackwater who are doing it. It is wrong. They need to be evicted. That is where the security agencies, even this one, if you talk, they say, oh, they're the navy because they have the boots and all those things to go and arrest those people and clamp down, then remove them and somebody also take persecution, etcetera. So the prevention depends on the circumstances. Some of the preventions, we say, no, Charlie, these guys, let's, let's help them, let's wait for them. This area, no, let's stop them. Sometimes you stop them, they come back, we bring in the security when necessary. Some of the prevention, somebody else will go and evict it because I don't have what it takes, respectfully, Honorable Daphia Meppol, to go deep inside the Prabima or Blackwater unless the navy. Even in certain instances, Musek and Koo, they have to use the navy to go. Because if you look at eh, eh, the Blackwater, like, it goes a lot of dense jungle. So as to the prevention, it depends on the circumstances. It depends on the circumstances. That, that is what I think.
Let me, let me. Uh, CEO, we have had Operation Galam Stop, being eh, a multi-security service operation, huge budget. I can give you the figures. We have had the sixty-four member interministerial committee, huge budget. And then we have had one other eh, eh, policy initiative. I forgot it, about three or four different initiatives. All this, all this have failed because the, the menace is, is, is rather on the ascendancy. And so as the regulator, I think my point right from the beginning has been, will you consider thank you, because you see, you are, you are looking at your functions as fashion out in nineteen ninety-three. In fact, from nineteen eighty-six, as amended by, as eh, PNDS law, I think, one-five-four, as amended by Act four fifty nineteen ninety-three, no, it repealed by Act four fifty nineteen ninety-three. You, you are still looking at your functions in those innocent, innocent era. Where you have officers who, engineers who go quietly into the neighborhoods, eh, look around, conduct their inspective activities and come back and prepare reports. We have moved from those era to an era where people now call them environmental terrorists. People are actually moving with excavators into farmlands. I've seen videos where women and men are crying, they don't bulldoze my planting eh, my, 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 my planting cultivation down. And yet the bulldozer is, is raising them down. I've seen cocoa farms being raised to the ground just so people can excavate the latrites and carry them away and go and process. You, oh, okay. I have also witnessed, the Auditor General, like I said, flagged situations including school buildings, school grounds being degraded to the standard, existing school buildings are being threatened by Galamsey activities and it's captured in the Auditor General's report. So eh, eh, CEO Martin, my brother, I, 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 I want to see a situation where you think that the institution must be metamorphosed into maybe a paramilitary service. You, you have to begin to think that way. Look, you know, look, two years ago, two years ago, when the First Deputy Speaker commented on the floor that we are regarding this Galamsemen, as we've got into a stage where there should be a shoot and kill order, we all thought that he had, we had, we had gone beyond the bounds. We, we all, we all, we all felt scandalized and criticized him. But I think that where we've got, look at the, the bottles of.
I, I, I still do respectfully, Honorable Member, if I could just, I think that Mr. Icy has made his point very eh, succinctly. He doesn't think that um, his responsibility goes beyond certain boundaries. I.
Depending on, depending on the situation.
Exactly. And, 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 and maybe before I ask my question, I'm going to state categorically to that I, I, I completely disagree with you. I think that you can do far more than you are doing today. Because, I mean, the law is clear on what the Minerals Commission is supposed to do. The um, minister is responsible for mining and policy in this country. But the Mincom is supposed to be the day-to-day administrator of everything mining in this country. And I liken you to another agency under the same ministry, the Forestry Commission. I do not see the Chief Executive Officer of the Forestry Commission, for example, saying that it is not their responsibility to apprehend people who engage in um, um, illegal logging of timber and that it is the police service that should do that. I do not see the Chief Executive Officer saying that, oh, eh, people are encroaching on our forests and all we have to do is to alert the security services to come and, and, and chase them away. And if the security services fail to do that, then we have done our part. I do not see the Forestry Commission saying that, look, um, yes, the wildlife department of the Forest Commission is the only, eh, 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 you know, unit that is armed. But, but, but the point, the point I'm making is that even that, they, they are commission, you are a commission. And so I do not think that it is okay to just report. And I'm, I don't expect you to comment on it. You have made your point. I'm making my point that I disagree with you. I think that you can still do much more because the Minerals Commission is responsible for the day-to-day administration and is authorized actually, you know, to perform a range of specific duties and functions, eh, including granting of licenses. But it looks as if the focus more is on granting of licenses. But I want to go to some specific questions now. Now, you mentioned to us that since twenty seventeen, you have issued about two hundred and forty-three licenses. The constitution under Article two six eight one and two are very clear on what should happen to licenses that are issued to agencies for the purposes, I mean, to companies for the purposes of mining. I'll quote for the avoidance of doubt, two six eight one, "Any transaction, contract or undertaking involving the grant of a right or concession by or on behalf of any person, including the government of Ghana, to any other person, any other person or body of persons howsoever described for the exploitation of any mineral, water or other ne- natural resource of Ghana, made or entered into after the coming into force of this constitution shall be subject to ratification by parliament." And two says, "Parliament may, by resolution, supported by the votes of not less than two-thirds of all members of parliament, exempt from the provisions of clause one of this article, any particular class of transaction, contract or undertakings." This is also almost reproduced in Act seven zero three of the eh, eh, Minerals and Mining Act. How many of these two hundred and forty-three licenses have been submitted to parliament for ratification? Or at which point the parliament give an exempt, if there was any such exempt given?
Chair, two things. One, eh, so that we don't lose focus, I'll answer your question. Chair, respectfully, one other radical approach, following the persistent probing of Honorable eh, Daphra Meppol and then how Honorable Sunini capital is to this river garden that we talked about. You know, river guards, so that when the security people go and clear them, we can have people who stay there and make sure they don't come in. I think the ministry started, I don't know what has happened in, but that's a radical approach rather than bear arms, so that, you see, you can have the military people all over the place. So you send less than a hundred military people, they go and flash. You can have vantage points where you can have river guards all over the place. Then you can just have one or two security people who may be patrolling. Because I want you to come to my control room and see. And then we will link all those things to the control room, so that's also another radical approach. We pursue the river guard thing rather than let our people bear arms by forestry commission. Honorable Suni, let's come back to your question now. What I said was that, I read from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-two. The figure I gave was for small scale, I have it here, I'll distribute it. These are licenses that were issued. So in twenty twelve, three three two, twenty, I'll be fast about that, chair, twenty thirteen, two eight three, twenty fourteen, one oh five, twenty fifteen, three two one, twenty sixteen, three six one, twenty seventeen, seven, twenty eighteen, nil, because of the ban. Twenty nineteen, one oh three, twenty twenty-one, eleven, twenty twenty-two, one forty-eight, twenty twenty-three, thirty-eight, twenty twenty-four, ninety-three. Total from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-four, September thirtieth, two four two three. So I'm sure that two four two three is what you heard as two forty-three. This is for small scale. Respectfully, Chair, I'll give them to my sister, Diaga, to circulate.
Okay, Mr. Icy, we'll need you to clarify this. I have a printout from your website, the Ghana Mining Repository. And the figures you are mentioning, what you have just tabled before us, do not align with what is on the website. What I have from your website between two thousand and eight and twenty sixteen, fifty-six small-scale mining licenses. Then between two thousand and seventeen to September twenty twenty-four, I have one thousand five hundred and three, I have the printouts here. So can you please explain the discrepancy? What you are telling us today is different from what we have been working with from your open source data from your website?
Chair, thank you very much. When I asked my mineral treaty office, that's the same question I posed to them. Because I saw that thing, two thousand eight hundred percent here, so I gave it to all my people, assembled them and I said, have you seen this from social media? Let's go to the documents. Chair, respectfully, what I'm reading now are licenses that were issued. It is different from renewals. So the figures may not be the same. So, for example, when I say, let's say, twenty twelve, three hundred and thirty-two licenses were issued, or let's say, twenty twenty-two, one forty-eight licenses were issued, it doesn't include renewals. I want you to understand clearly, so perhaps that may be creating a problem. Because you may have a license that may be in a small scale for five years. So let's say, somebody might have obtained his license in twenty seventeen. If it's twenty seventeen, he may, let's say, be among the seven that was issued in twenty seventeen. Do you understand that? If he's due for renewal, he might renew it, you know, when it's about to expire. So renewals are not the same as issuance. So what we can do to clarify the confusion is to now go further and state clearly in a particular year, what was issued as fresh license? That's what I have here. What was renewal? What expired and the people didn't come back, it will solve your problem. So this does not respectfully include renewals. The figures you are talking about, they may include renewals. So when I put here, let's say, twenty twenty-two, one forty-eight was issued, it may be, these are new licenses, licenses that were issued in that particular year. If you add renewals that were renewed in that particular year, the figure may be higher than that. That's what I'm trying to say. So that is why it is not tallying, these are just fresh applications per year. I can add the renewals.
Well, you may have to take a second look at the data. Because for each and every one of these licenses, we have the application date. When you click and delve into the details, and I must commend you, I think that of all public institutions, it's probably the most detailed. A lot of effort and industry has gone into the work you have done. And that is why I'm surprised that suddenly it appears not to be credible and comprehensive. Because the date is provided for application and then we are also given the start date and then the license code. So and the duration, the period is given, we are told that this is from, for example, if you take this one with the code PL eight slash thirty-four, small-scale license to Emmerland Resources Limited. The duration is provided from twenty twelve to twenty seventeen is provided. So and we are told, active license. Where they are under review, we are also told, this is under review, all on the website. And that's what we have been working with as a committee. So suddenly you are springing this surprise on us, data that, you know, is not on your website. What do we go with? Because. Yeah.
The one you just read, can you give me the code, please?
The code is PL eight slash thirty-four.
So that is large scale. PL, prospecting. Anytime you see PL, it's prospecting. You see ML, mining lease. Small scale is a different code. So what I'm giving you here is small scale. So the figure you are mentioning is a combination of mineral rights as I define in my introductory remarks. So what I'll do is that, respectfully, I can take your question.
So in that case, ours should then be even more than what, but your figures are more than.
No, because, Chair, I'm not rebating or what, I'm just trying to clarify. So, for example, you mentioned Emmerland. Emmerland is not a small scale because I can tell on top of my head, the way we code the system, anything you find PL, prospecting license.
Yeah.
Prospecting license, yeah. So perhaps what you are showing me, and I don't mind taking it, is a total of all mineral rights. That will include mining license, exploration. When you see RL, reconnaissance. You see PL, prospecting, ML, mining lease, and then there's small scale too. So that is why you are seeing those huge figures, including renewals. So I don't mind taking your questions, so after here, you can specifically list your questions for me, we'll prepare and hand over the documents to you.
So are you doing some work on the website to reconcile all of this?
Every second we are updating. That's why sometimes when we post it, we have deleted something, I say that's not the case. Every day we are updating, every day, because once the licenses comes through, you have to update. Sometimes even people will call you and say, oh, my name is not on the website because my client has checked, they said your name is not there, so I can't buy gold from you. Every second, once it comes through, we are updating. People are aspiring, so we are deleting, we are adding, we are adjusting. So I always advise, if you find any data, just cross-check with us. If there are mistakes, we will admit.
So why are you still issuing licenses as I said now?
Chair.
Because on your website, last week, we saw new start dates, third October twenty twenty-four. One will have thought that in the midst of this crisis, at least you hold on for a while, there will be a stalemate so that we can figure out, you know, see a way clear out of this hazy, messy, you know, catastrophic situation. But you are still issuing licenses, why?
Chair, let me, let me explain. I think I listened to you on Metro and then other people. As we speak, the issue is not about issuing licenses. If that's a new argument, fine, we can have that debate, whether or not should we pause, we can do that. The issue is about illegal mining, people working in the water body, people going to the forest, etc. I have not received any instructions from government or minister to say, can you hold on? So respectfully, as I sit here and as we speak, my officers are online processing applications for small scale that have been received over the period, maybe today, last week, last year. Because sometimes when applications come in, you have to check to see whether or not he meets all the criteria. So processing applications are going on. If I got the directive from government that, oh, we are declaring a moratorium on processing of applications, I'll comply. Maybe your question is, in the midst of all this, would you recommend to government to stop processing? If you ask me, rather than tell you, let me go and think about it and come. Chair, again, respectfully, if you stop, you complicate the issues. Compliance and ensuring that things are being monitored properly so that they follow the rules and prepared to open myself for scrutiny, we can discuss that. But if you ask me personally, when you stop the application? So for somebody who is going to take some money, he's going to the process, the officer has done the expansion, he has uploaded it online, forwarded to Mincom, and he's at the minister, he's about to stop it. And then he gets an advisor, government says, or minerals commission now has stopped processing for a while. Three things will happen. They'll start making noise and say, oh, so me that I want to do it properly, you are stopping me? Wow, I'll go and do it illegally. I'm just thinking.
We are stopping everybody.
Just a second.
We want to stop everybody.
Just a second, that's number one. Number two, you say, okay, fine. Before the last, he finds himself somewhere. Some others will say, okay, we are law, so many things can happen. Someone will say, oh, me, I'm law-abiding, so I'll take it and wait. When they come back like they did in twenty eighteen, we'll go back. All kinds of things can happen. And I thought that would complicate matters and make it very difficult. And then maybe one more thing. Chair, respectfully, I don't know whether you have been to Taka or maybe Tinga or Dakuppe.
Well, the last time I was there was in twenty twenty.
Yes, so the five thousand people at RMG sites that have a license, that have all those things and they are working, they keep telling me that, Mr. Icy, I then offer so good me Juma for something I'm not responsible for. I always try to answer that. I am going underground. I've taken the trouble to come for licenses because there are other people at Kandemay Fumbisi who are doing it illegally. But I have taken the pains to come and do it, I've invested money. Now, for somebody who has gone into the water body or also doing that, has not got a license and let's say the state or the republic, because we are all agents of the state, has not been able to stop it and we find ourselves in this mess. You want to stop me? You're not being fair to me. Hear me out. That is the kind of message I get from folks in Tinga, Dakuppe and Taka, who are working underground and they have their papers. So he says, you also listen to me. I've spent money, I'm not responsible for that mess. Why don't you go and deal with those who are policing? And that will be a corner becoming. Are you being fair to me? They tell me this. And I'm saying, okay, can we?
Sharman, you know, respectfully, Mr. Icy, I have lived in areas where curfews have been declared. You know, state of emergency. You know, it's state of emergency when it's declared and curfews are declared. It's not done because everyone in their locality is a warrior or engage in the fight. It is declared and people who are not even part of the warring factions will have to obey because there is an emergency to be dealt with. But my question hasn't been answered yet and I am very particular about it because it is a responsibility of parliament that many out there are questioning today. What are we doing as parliamentarians? So I want to know how many of those licenses have been presented before this August House for ratification as required by the constitution and the act?
Honorable Suni, I will not in all respect and honesty be able to be, tell me on top of my head that this is it. I didn't expect a question of ratification. What I can guarantee you that because of our aggressive digitalization process, I can send the data to you. I can, I remember your suit very well, that even led to the rush of that over hundred as much as I'm being ratified.
Exactly, and those ones that, those ones involve large mining scales. My case in court was with the large, in fact, well, I asked for all mining leases to be brought before parliament and the government rushed with those leases for ratification, but did not even include small-scale licenses. But this, you know, provision of Article two six eight one says that whichever ever or howsoever you describe, you know, a grant should come before parliament for ratification. And that is why I'm very interested in how many. And if you are saying you can, through digitalization, send us the data. I will want a firm assurance from you, if you check and none haven't, have been presented, because I have been on the lands and forestry committee for a while now. I don't remember us, even though, yes, mining has already come under that committee only recently. I don't remember us considering any of these licenses. Will you commit before this committee to ensure, as required by law, that your minister, because you are supposed to advise your minister, submit these licenses before parliament as soon as possible for parliament to consider and either ratify or reject?
Yes, Chair, two things. As I said, I want to go back, gather the data and submit to Madame Diaga. I have a relationship with you, most of you, I am on WhatsApp with you. I'll tell you that this is what our records see. The ones that have not been ratified will do the necessary, what do you call it, recommendation to our minister to bring it to the house. It's as simple as that, will do that. And I'll even reference this assurance committee that appeared before the assurance committee as part of the grilling. They are saying that all the licenses that have not been ratified, please, and we'll work on it and bring it, I'll do that. I'll do that. Sharman, it's not, it's not as part of the grilling.
Yeah, sure.
But as part of the requirement of law, senior, you know, as part of the constitutional requirement, if it's not been done, it has to be done. But to my small advice, you see, under Act seven zero three as amended by nine nine five, the four categories of licenses which you spoke about, the reconnaissance license, prospecting, mining and small scale. Let me suggest to you that you organize the data according to these categories. So that the number of prospect, reconnaissance license that you issued, you indicated renewed, so that the data will be under reconnaissance. When it comes to prospecting, the same structure. Mining lease, the same structure, small scale, the same structure. So tomorrow, when you are submitting this data or you are speaking to it, you are able to categorize the discussions. So we don't have this, the bundling the data together to create a certain confusion. Ah, senior, if you appreciate what I'm saying, yeah. Because we use code, it's quite easy for us. But you see, the users of your system is not you, the technical people. So I'll quickly go back to my developers, quickly, and see if people can, they should be able to do.
The law actually structures in that way.
So then when you click, you can go into small scale. And in that manner, in which Honorable Ness in the Fiam Report desire, we'll do it that way. It is only through this exercise that life can be for all of us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so Mr. Icy, back to the issue of licensing. You admitted a while ago that you will wish you had more staff, more resources.
No, let me, let me clarify, let me, please, let me clarify.
Okay.
Respectfully, it is rude to interrupt you.
No problem, no, it's fine, it's a house of records, so.
I'm saying that we have recruited enough people. So for now, what we have is fine, we can do the work with it. That's what I said.
So even though you are still putting up offices, you've told us about the the new offices you are building, eh about ten of them coming up, eh some to be open next year. Eh, wh- why are you putting up new offices? Why are you spending taxpayer resources expanding if if you are okay?
Chair, we are expanding for several reasons. So for instance, you remember I said in my introductory remarks that there's only one lab for the Minas Commission in Ghana, Takkadi, which dealt with mining operations in five regions. Now you are talking about mining, if you like, exploration and mining in all the existing regions in Ghana. Because there's mining in Greater Akra, Quary, the Chiis area there. So we will become inefficient, the very reason why you have brought me here, to make sure that I become efficient and accountable. We'll become inefficient if the likes of Kadina, Azuma have to come to Takkadi for testing. In fact, the lab is even planned for Tamale so that Kadina eh eh those new mines that are coming up in Zebila, Sapelega and Azuma will come to Tamale. Because for now, Obuasi people, a half north, a half south, Asanku, and could go to Takkadi for rope tests, those underground. But once we complete the lab this year, they will handle that. We are also putting up. So for the labs like this, we are expanding.
So you clearly have constraints, don't you? You clearly have constraints.
Well, eh when you say constraint, I'm just giving one example like lab. That's a typical example. We are expanding. But if it is men, it's a matter of salary.
Respectfully, do I get the impression that you don't want to admit to your constraints, to your staffing and resource challenges because that would then clearly show that you are responsible for where we are or that is a major contributing factor to the crisis that we face. And so that's why you eh with all due respect, you know, cleverly trying to eh but you forget that November is fast approaching. You will appear before this house and eh you may be asking for approvals for some of these eh projects. And this record may hamper your progress in terms of eh expansion.
Chair.
And and additional staffing. So 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 let's be clear eh because you appear to be contradicting yourself.
Chair, I'll be honest.
You say you are okay and yet eh in another breath, you are you are you are speaking to challenges. You say that you even be asking for seven fifty from the six forty that we approved for you eh and and all of that. So i- it's not very clear to us for our records.
Chair, I'll be honest with you. If I'm going to ask for more money, it's to do other things. I wanted to separate staffing from other things.
So you are saying that as it is now, you don't have any challenges with staffing, with logistics, with office accommodation?
Chair, let me explain.
Is that is that what you are telling us for clarity?
Yes. Chair, whilst I'm even leaving, when I was leaving the office to come to this place, I even asked my HR people to give me their full details. Unfortunately, I couldn't get it to see the number of inspectors we have hired to put them on the ground. It's all about the number of inspectors. Because my minister has been on my on my neck to hire more people, which we have done. It's all about inspectors. Going into the water body.
So so so, Mr. Yisi.
So staffing step we are fine because, you see, I even read something on X.
Okay, you you let me, let me put my question this way. Eh perhaps maybe that will help all of us. Do you take responsibility for the state of our country? And when I say the state of our country, it includes the state of our river bodies, the state of our forests, the destruction caused by Galamsay, the impact on public health, the impact on our water, our water production, the babies being born with deformities and all of those concomitant effects. Do you take responsibility?
No, I'm prepared to take responsibility for where we have gone wrong as far as our mandate is concerned.
You are the chief regulator.
Yes.
So if you not take responsibility, who should we place responsibility on?
Honorable Kuduto, I'll, and chair, respectfully, I'll keep repeating myself with some of the examples. And I want you to understand it clearly with me. For example, where my officer has a mandate to go around and monitor, like honorableness in the firm has been saying, to make sure that people do it properly. And also his second point, which he asked me to explain, stop it. And I gave two scenarios in which you can stop it. Those who are doing it, we can help them do it properly. And those who are doing it for whatever reason, where we saw them doing it, there's nothing we can do than to make sure they are cleared. And we take the necessary appropriate steps per our mandate and they are not cleared, I will struggle to take responsibility. The best example, they cannot go roadside. We did everything under eh 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 the sun to make sure that we stop it, like honorable Dafemopoi is saying. We took the steps, we brought it to do, the appropriate authority who must go and make sure that it is stopped. It didn't happen and we saw that shameful thing that embarrassed all of us to the extent that the Kumasi rope has the business in Ghana could have a wife in T2. How else will I take responsibility? But then if it turns out that when the thing was going on, the officer even didn't pick it or didn't even do that, then he has failed the second test you put strongly before me. So I want us to put the responsibility.
CEO, CEO, let me put this in perspective because Honorable Susu wants to come in quickly then he leaves. If you read section thirteen ten of Act s- s- seven zero three as amended by nine nine five, he has this to say, Chairman, if with your leave.
Sure.
He says, the holder of a mineral right shall not remove or destroy a mineral obtained by the holder in the course of a mineral operations without the permission in writing of the head of the Inspectorate Division of the Commission. Now, senior, you are senior to me in the law by far, so you know what this means. It means arguably your inspectorate division should be your bulwark against the issues that are germane to today's hearing. So again, I'll urge you that maybe after today's hearing, take a second look at your structure and see where you can strengthen in terms of manpower and to make you a bit more effective like we expect from you because the law mandates you to do exactly that. Then again, if you look at our standing orders, the hearing that we conduct, we are supposed to go back to plenary with a report.
Yeah.
Eh eh we are not doing this in in Vacou. We are supposed to go back with recommendations and listening to you, we should be able to go back and recommend to plenary that, no, given what's happening, you need A, B, C, D enhancement in terms of the performance of your functions under the law. We should be able to do that for you. But you must, you must come across as willing to assume those new responsibilities if we make the recommendations. So asking for additional budget is okay, but you should be able to also tell us as a nation that given the scenario, you want to do more to be able to deal with the issues.
For example, I would like you to carry along that geological investigation is key. And that's why I'm asking more money for ourselves.
So, Chairman, with your leave, clerk, clerk, if clerk, if you can take note of this.
That's helping the process. Our 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 geological investigation goes to the DNA of resolving the issue. So Minkom will need more money and you need to pump more into geological survey. That's one thing I want you to take away from this. Number two, I also want you to take away from the fact that in looking at the issue, we should also be clear that if you want to empower more Minkom, maybe we should eh push thoroughly through this river gas thing or mine waters. Let's call them that way. Because sometimes when you mention gas, it evokes security issues. Then now even the meeting will come, oh, are they supposed to carry gun? Then they also will come with their own issue and say, maybe we are opposed. No, 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 that kind of thing. So this, for example, these two strong things, I want you to carry it along. River wardens that will police after the suits have been done so that the soldiers don't keep going back and we waste money. And also for me, what is the 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 everything, this geological investigation where we need to resource Minkom and geological survey to do for the hiring and bringing more men. You keep increasing the budget for us and we've hired a lot of people.
Eh 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 earlier you said four, but we 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 only have three. Eh that's the geological investigations, licensing, you've just talked about the river wardens. Um, are you abandoning the fourth? Because earlier you say you were going to give us four recommendations.
Eh, the the.
But so far, we have three.
Yes, the new, eh I think some of them are already in the domain eh which made rounds recently. Eh, the, no, the geological investigation, the parlour, we started, it's the same thing. Eh, this issue of not taking them to this main court. You saw the history behind the fast track thing. Eh, just to speed up cases, they were sitting.
Okay, so specialized courts.
Yes, specialized court, which already eh without waiting for the conclusion of the fine detail, because you have to go to a certain process. You saw already the the statement issued by the Attorney General when he opened a some conference recently that, look, eh I've directed the Chief Justice to do S, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Whilst we wait to go through what it takes to have specialized courts in the mining areas. That is also strongly something I also want to talk about. And then one other thing is that we will need to step up.
Well, before before you get there, I'm sure it was probably a slip. Eh, the Attorney General cannot direct the Chief Justice.
Oh, yes, that that's a regular journalist can carry the story.
Yeah, but we we don't have to fall fall in that eh in that trap.
Yes.
You know, as as one of the three arms of government, we are careful about protecting our independence. Yeah, so.
Okay, that's fine. Just like eh some people will say that eh ban Galamsay. Something that is also banned. And then eh I believe said one point here, lack of commitment on the part of some, not all, MMDCs, Assam members, chiefs in a fight against Galamsay. Chair, just two seconds. I see two categories of chiefs and I'm being real from the situation on the ground. Chiefs who will do anything. And you dare not. There's a no soldier who is a chief in some part of Western Region. You dare not. He dare not. Then there are DCs who do everything to stop Galamsay. For example, I know there are Chin Mansa, DC Paul, is my darling and the host of others. You understand that? But some of the chiefs have been involved in Galamsay and it's not just one off incident. Several, I mean, the the two men by the Asanti, the Overlord of Asanti Kidom is just eh the one that are being reported. There are a lot of chiefs. In fact, what my DCs officers tell me that when the Galamsay people come like that, they will tell them eh they will slaughter, I'm sure you have heard, perform some ritual and say, morning, I'm Minko. Eh, so that is also a factor. And one other thing we have to look at is that I think Coco Board is beginning to look at the issue. This cocoa illegal mining thing is something we will need to change the narrative and do the education very well. They've cut look a lot of reasons. If you listen to the Coco Board CEO, also, they could see saying with him some time ago, he mentioned climate change, solar shoots and a whole sort of thing. He also mentioned Galamsay. But I get up and I see a cocoa farmer. I'm not making apologies, but sometimes you need to understand people. Because I heard eh an Asanti chief got up and said, doing one of the dialogues that, ah, yeah, yeah, Galamsay, ah. People are cutting cocoa and doing seasonal crops. And the people got up, they were clapping for him. I want to believe that his point is that per has cocoa, they need to do more in terms of paying them. Then I also hear somebody saying that, oh, I've been a cocoa farmer all my life and I've never even seen ten thousand before. It is not a excuse for Galamsay because sometimes when you know the real situation on the ground, you know how to rearrange your tactics. And I told you, saw all that video, that old man who was saying that eh the cocoa is mine. Eh, move pa move be chimmy, me me who ten thousand, that wabema me good will ten thousand, I'll give it out to him and all those things. So it means that there might be some kind of education to re- rearrange people's mentality and 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 ideas and all those things. So it is not, so whilst we are working on geological investigation and all those things, in the short to medium term, too, a lot of public education is also required in some of these cocoa growing areas. Or else these things will keep happening. So by far, these are some of the four issues that I I I've been talking about. To repeat, geological investigation, we need to revisit this river wardens in not guards and then also gather to that dimension. With this, I think we can go far. But as I said, I'll put premium on geological investigation. Thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, very quickly, you mentioned MMDCs. Uh, yeah, not 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 all, certainly. Um, but in the in the work we are doing, we have observed quite startling that some of these MCEs and DCs are incorporating companies coming to you for license and you are granting them the license with alacrity. And they themselves are busy mining. Of course, they will argue that they are engaged in legal mining. From where you sit, do you think that it is right for heads of DISEX who must work with you, collaborate with you? You have been talking about the lack of support from some of the security agencies. Do you think that this is a healthy development where MMDCs are themselves obtaining licenses and mining in the very jurisdictions that they preside over?
You raise this on metal. Thursday, I think I listened to you. I want to speak to facts and also speak my mind. What you can do for me is that if I can get those information, I'm promising you, I'll go and look at it and give you a written proper response. Eh, I don't want to say anything that will commit myself.
Okay, that is fair. That is fair. So.
Some of the things, the only thing we can do is is tell you that we will go back, prepare and 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 then get you more information. Like the ratification, Honorable Sini asks, some of them, I can also tell you what I think and also tell the government policy. And sometimes I even make my own views, which is different from government. Yes. So this one like this, if you respectfully give me the data.
Yes, I'll I'll submit the, I'll submit the incorporation documents to you. Eh, the companies are JK Sam Mining, um eh the the DC for Empoh, Honorable Ignatius Assamensa is the sole proprietor for this one. Then we have the Coverza Construction and Engineering Limited, the MCE for Menfe East. The Honorable Frederick Crunchy is the director for this company. So we will, we'll give them to you. We'll make these documents available to you. Eh, but do you care to share your general principle? Do you think that this is a healthy situation? Does it help in in addressing the menace? Where you have MMDCs obtaining licenses, eh those who are supposed to maintain security are themselves, you know, engaging active mining. Do you, will you recommend that as a house, we probably consider legislation to directly outlaw this? Because it raises potential conflict of interest, you know, eh eh scenarios here.
Chair, why not? Even in the light of what we are going through, why not? For example, it's the same light in which people are saying that, oh, looking at what is happening, why don't you stop licensing altogether? Why don't you even stop lawful smoski? So in the light of that, why not? Why not? Because it is issues that bring, you know, things to the fore and then we take appropriate steps. Why not?
Okay, uh, Honorable Sosu.
Thank you very much, uh, Honorable Chair, I want to find out from the CEO. Whether in all honesty, he considers the current situation that we are faced with as a crisis. Do you consider what is happening now as a crisis?
Chair, why not? Because look at our water bodies. Uh, I can see several bodies line up before you, it's, it's not something we should tolerate and we have to deal with it.
And Honorable Chair, if you consider this as a crisis, it is said that extraordinary. Times require extraordinary actions. People watching us now. All believe that. Ban Galamsi now. In other words, ban small scale mining now. It doesn't matter what all these beautiful proposals may mean today, because people want to see action. Would you consider recommending to your sector minister that as a matter of urgency? We must stop issuing small scale mining licenses, at least for now, until the situation comes under control.
Chair, again, in the course of his questioning. You heard him say, ban Galamsi now, see, that's where the problem comes from. Uh, but I, 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 but I, but I understand his question.
Very well, so, yeah, within that context, small scale mining now, yes.
Ad- additionally, he said whether we should ban small scale, in other words, uh, we should not allow anybody to even do it lawfully. Chair, if you ask me, I'll say no, because that will not solve the problem. So it will make it worse.
No, so if that will not solve the problem, particularly in the middle of crisis. You know, there is, there are action points when crisis erupts. We have a situation where our compatriots, today I'm just from court, people are being held in court because they are out there saying that. Uh, illegal mining is destroying our water bodies, even some legal mining. And so the whole issue is that in the middle of crisis, you need to take one step back. In order to reconsider the situation, so you can move forward. So if you say it won't solve the problem now, what to solve the problem now? Because we need the immediate action before we have the medium, medium term solutions, then we can have the long term solutions. Because I see a lot of these geological survey issues and all that as both medium to long term solutions. But as we speak here, as we speak today, what Ghanaians are looking out for? On Friday, the Cadley Bishop's Conference are going on demonstration, why? Because of issues like this. People are still on remand, why? Because of issues like this. So every sector that deals with mining would have to be seen doing some, taking some drastic step. So what would you consider to be your first drastic step to stopping this issue?
As I said, I mean, going to the water body is just a criminal activity, it's not allowed, this is going and just take them out. And then, and then those four things are catalogued. And the Honorable Sosu, uh, remember, you said, uh, uh, crisis situation require emergency situation. But I'm also mindful of even the Supreme Court decision in, uh, is it, uh, A P I G A T R? Even in the current state of emergencies, it doesn't give the state a carte blanche to just wipe out anything. So how do I come with this? I'm also saying that, yes, it is a crisis, you need to deal with the situation. But also some people out there, not just one or two people, several thousands, if not millions, are also saying, there's that. We are also not connected to this, so why don't you leave us out and deal with what is creating the problem? But that, that is why I personally would not recommend. And in any case, government has come out, that is not to say that perhaps the government will not change any policies, government has made it clear. That they are not going to ban lawful small scale mining. If you ask me, do I support that? I'll say yes, for reasons that I have catalogued separately before this committee, that there are that several thousands. Who are not involved in a kind of thing that has led to all these things, so we should be also be careful. Not to, uh, what do you call it, uh, uh, throw the baby with the bathwater, and then we've been here before, it didn't work, it didn't work. So it, I will not support it, that we should stop small scale mining lawfully, lawfully. I will not support it, that's my personal position.
Honorable Chair. You know, I hear the CEO saying that government position is that it is not ready to ban small scale mining. Lawfully, lawful small scale mining, let me put it that way. And yet the nominee says, one of the drastic ways, sorry. Yeah, the CEO, yeah, yet the, the CEO says. Let's just get into the water and, and remove the people as a matter of urgency. Who is responsible for that? It is a government. With this conclusion, don't you see the government being complicit with the fight against? This illegal mining, that is the reason why we are having this crisis right now.
Honorable Chair, I don't think so. I, 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 I cannot sit here and say government is complicit, no.
Who is supposed to remove the people from the wat- the water, the, the water bodies? Who is supposed to remove them from the forest, uh, uh, reserves? Who is supposed to monitor those, it's government and government agencies. So what it means is that in this fight, from the government to its agencies, they've all failed the people of Ghana and that's why we are where we are.
Honorable Sosu, uh, Chair, like I said, I don't deal with forestry matters. I'm not passing their backs, let forestry commissions you come and answer. Is it a case that it's not, because you, you put me through the test, Martin, is your four hundred enough? Why not six hundred? I've told you my position and some of the things that I wanted to do. So respectfully, respectfully, let you come and tell the committee, assurance committee, because no E P is also coming here. Is it a case that maybe if you have two hundred men, they need six hundred, he need more resources? If I sit here and speak for forestry, that would be wrong, so as he cannot speak for Minkom too. Do you understand that? Hey, I cannot speak for, for, so I, I, I'm not in position to speak to things that are outside. My, 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 my realm or domain, I, 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 that, that would be wrong.
I can't speak for forestry commission. That is very fair.
I can't speak for forestry commission.
That's very fair, but with respect to your commission, right, your mandate. It is quite shocking that you don't see the immediate seizure. Of granting of those small scale licenses as part of the immediate actions needed. To at least reassure the people of Ghana that we are all concerned and we are doing something about it. And as a matter of a first step, this is what we are doing, at least for some time.
Chair, I am not saying that because I believe sincerely. Twenty-two years in minerals commission and all that we have done, governments upon government, because I work with practically all governments. N D C one, N D C two, M P P one, M P P two, whatever. This is not the solution. Two, we've been there before. And three, and most importantly, that is not the fundamental issue. That is not a fundamental issue.
What is the fundamental issue? And why have we not addressed it in twenty-three years?
If, if, oh, Honorable Sosu, I spent a lot of time respectively and catalogued the reason why we are here, thirty day, thirty years of inaction. Achilakpa, Kofi Ansah, they are alive, they said we should do geological investigation, governments after governments said no. Uh, uh, even when they hear that it's five percent chances, they say, oh, uh, there are schools under trees, Guinea, etc. And then we realize how technology has made all of us to use the word small. So I took pace to explain a lot of those things, I took time to explain it.
Uh, Chairman, let me ask this very interesting one. CEO, how much do we make from issuing licenses?
My answer is very simple, it is not, it is not the money.
It's not a revenue.
It's not a revenue, because small scale licenses don't cost so much like last year. I mean, see the equivalent of hundred dollars. You know?
They can't be done.
And then, yeah, the maps, they will get surveyor to do and all those things. I mean, basically, ten thousand or so or less, he can get all those things done. So it's, for small scale, it's not about.
It's not about the revenue.
It's not about the revenue. The reverse of not doing is the diverse, the trade you will leave. You see, that twenty eighteen, we ban lawful small scale mining, yet two point two billion was recorded as ma- uh, small scale, receipts from small scale. It's not so much about the revenue than the destruction it will cause, the destruction will be more than the, the barely twenty thousand Ghana cities or less that it will cost to process it. If anything rather at all, we should rather be enhancing, strengthening and deepening enforcement and compliance. That, that's the curse of the matter.
Still on the first matter of licenses. Have you heard media reports? That seem to suggest that there is a cartel out there where some middlemen. Uh, facilitate these processes and, um. Make some money out of it. Um, like you have with the Go Boy situation with licensing, uh, at D V L A passports and all of that. That there seem to be a similar cartel emerging. And indeed, linked to that is an arrest that was made on the fourteenth of September, twenty twenty-two. I'm reading from my journal line, Lance Ministry staff arrested for extorting money. Uh, he was described as an aide to the Deputy Minister, uh, the Honorable Mre Kuduka. And he had apparently extorted about two hundred thousand Ghana cities. Uh, from people who needed services in your space, at the ministry and, uh, at the minerals commission. His name is Gabriel Sapon. Uh, nothing has been reported since this arrest, I don't know if you are conversant with the facts. And, um, wh- wh- what do you say about, about, about these reports? Because some people are beginning to link this, uh, connect the dots and they are saying that perhaps because of that cartel operating. That is why we are seeing a boom in, um, in the issuance of, of licenses. Uh, so, so how do you respond to those media reports and the arrest of, uh, Gabriel Sapon, uh, related to this, this matter? I don't know if he has, I mean, was he prosecuted, do you know?
Yes, Chair, I think he was swiftly arrested, prosecuted in jail, he was jailed.
Okay.
Uh, and that is it. There are bad people everywhere, no apologies. So, uh, if my secretary now start collecting money from people and say, oh, I talked to CEO to do this and something, I mean, I mean, we will take her to due process and, and just. Uh, get her out and dismiss her, so that particular case was prosecuted, I remember, it was swiftly done. And then the other one too is that, you see, under the law, support services. There are persons who can apply and get registered by the minerals commission to undertake mineral exploration services and work as consultants. So, I mean, there are people there, for example, if you want a license, you don't even need to show up. It's just to get in touch with one of those consultant who are properly registered to do everything on your behalf. Whatever information he needs, it comes to you provide and then he does it for you, it's permitted. Yes, if there are impressions of people do the wrong thing, they know we deal with them. That is it, so if that's what is being interpreted as cartel, then I, I, I don't think so. I think I did explain this in another forum, there are a lot of them, consultants who are registered, properly registered. You see, mineral exploration services, uh, provision of licenses, assisting clients to do web program. So you may find maybe Martin A C Company Limited. Uh, he, he, he doesn't hold a mineral right, he hasn't got a license and he has, he's consulting for so many companies. Even he may be renewing Newmont, Gofus and Co licenses for them and they are very experienced who do that. Some of them even used to work in the mines, he's retired, he's into consultancy, so that is allowed.
We, we, we certainly know about the legal operations, uh, those activities that are allowed. But my focus is on the illegal. You know, activities, those, um, who are operating, you know, um, under the radar. Who are engaging racketeering, influence peddling, you know, those, 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 uh, miscreants, um, if I'll use that word. Have you heard these reports? Have you conducted any investigations into these reports? Because recently, one of the media houses was even putting a figure of thirty thousand dollars. Uh, based on their own investigations, that people are paying, you know, small scale mining license, uh. Uh, applicants, those who are interested in these licenses. And, and they claim that when they go through those middlemen, I'm not referring to the legal ones. Um, some ways somehow, things are faster and, uh, they, they get their licenses in, in, in very good time. I don't know if they are, if, if these reports are meritorious, but we will not know until you, you, you assure us that you have conducted some investigations. And you have determined that there is no basis or there are bases for the reports.
We hear these things, in fact, the one that made rounds, I explain like the example I gave you, yeah, so I always tell people. If somebody has any evidence that, oh, somebody took twenty thousand for him to say he'll go and get him license and bribe his way, let us know, we'll investigate it. Who, who investigates it and will make these things known to us, hey. That should be distinguished from a consultant who has lawfully charged and say, for me, I'm a, I'm a consultant, I can write a web program. I can do the application, everything for behalf, like these visa people, do everything, submit it for you and charge you appropriately. Those ones are lawful, but if anybody says somebody has taken money to bribe his way to the system, please give me that information, I'll deal with it.
Well, thank you very much for the assurance, Honorable Chiwetie.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, uh, Mr., you see. I, I feel that there's no strong collaboration, uh. Between you and the forestry commission and even, uh, E P. With the forestry commission, for instance, uh, there are instances, we have officers from the commission complaining that. People have licenses, uh, working in, uh, the forest res- on forest reserves. And, and so it tells you that. There's no collaboration, you are not able to tell whether they have the, the, the permit to enter into those forests before issuing the licenses. So I wish you people could collaborate more, so that maybe you should be the last person to give your license. So that when the, the applicants come, you should first inspect whether, well, you, certainly you, you have to know where they are going to operate. And so you should find out whether they have the E P, they have the permission to enter those forests before you issue the licenses. Um, an example is, uh, this Aquanta Mine, for instance, uh, I'm told. He has licenses to operate, but he was doing an illegal operation at where he was found. And so this leads me to my question, so people like that, people who have legal documents to mind, when they are found doing illegality, what happens? What does the commission do to people like that?
Chair, I think I clarified this, you see, when certain words are used, it creates a very dangerous situation. In the first place, collaboration, perfect, E P A sits on a licenses committee. So I work with them very well, Ali Sandhu, who is the head of mining, perfect gentleman, Sachi, we have fantastic relationship. I have a fantastic relationship with the forestry people. Two things, you said license to operate, it is wrong. I don't know whether you stood up quietly or you came back or when I was explaining. If anybody says by mere holding of a license signed by the minister on the recognition of the minerals commission, he has license to operate in a forest itself, he's lying. So that language, for example, is not appropriate, it's wrong. He needs forestry.
It's license, they have the license.
He has a license, but it is not sufficient for him to operate. He needed other licensing permit and approvers, so he needs to complete all the forestry arrangements, including a forestry entry permit. And the offset arrangement and all those things and the area you mine and how to go about that. He will need E P, he need all these things. So when a forestry commission officer tells you that somebody has shown him a license. And it is minerals commission for they are giving license to come and operate, then he's not doing his work very well. Just as if you come to a side that is lawfully permitted and there are impressions, I'll be the first to admit that we are not doing our work very well. Because he should know better, that a person should have been holding a forestry entry permit, the person should have had E P. And the person should have other approvers and, and if it's at least even perhaps ratified before he can operate and work lawfully. and the person should have other approvals and, and if it's at least even perhaps ratified before he can operate and work lawfully. So I want us to separate documentation from all the requisite documentation and approvals for you to be able to operate lawfully. Don't mix the two. So that statement cannot be right. If the person came and so we were licensed, a man required to operate, he's lying. If he does anything, it's illegal mining. Yes, so the forestry commission to say that, uh, he has Minerals Commission license, so that's why it's working, it's wrong. He should have known better. Where is his forestry entry permit? Is it valid? Where is his office arrangement? Where is his EPA? You know, that's wrong.
So people, people hold genuine documents and go into areas that they are not allowed to. If you get, yes, if you get such reports, what do you do to them?
We have to withdraw their license or punish them depending on what it is. Yes, and this is settled. I remember very well when Honorable Sini and other people came out. We said, don't mix having one particular document with operation or carrying out activities lawfully. And I was very categorical. And you remember once in a while, Martin, people keeps quoting me that according to the Minerals Commission, according to my minister, he says for you to be able to mine, you need A, B, C, D. So if the person was having A and he didn't have B, C and D, it amounts to illegal mining and that was settled. So when you see forestry commission says the person has license, so he allows him to operate lawfully, that is wrong in the eyes of the law. The forestry commission should know better. And I explained it two ways. The person is either doing Galamsi or there have been instances where the person may have a license over this area. He's not completed all the other authorizations and other people have entered. That is also there. Or he could be doing it himself, like the various scenarios that we had to come out and clarify. We're very categorical. So operation here means conducting the activity properly now and undertaking mining and following the rules. And I'm saying you need a set of documentation to be able to do that. Even if you are ten, you have nine without the last one. If you have forestry entry permit, you have the license, it is ratified, you have offset, all those arrangements, you don't have EPA. If you do anything, it is illegal. That's what I'm saying.
So Chair, do you have an instance where you've withdrawn somebody's or a company's license like that?
I have suspended people's license and redraw something. Oh, there are, yeah, quite a few. We can just check the records and advise. Yes. Depending on the gravity, it's either a fine, withdrawer or whatever, yes. Some you have to even send a recommendation, some even can end at a level. Some is just topic of operation, some heavy fine. It depends on the state of infraction, like police. Some mine officer, he just won't go away. Some he'll take it to court. And some he will even leave and say, master, man, yeah, there will be. So it depends.
So I'm following up on that. Um, can you tell this committee the last time you sanctioned any mining company?
Chair, I can't think on top of my head. I can check and as usual, finish. Uh, I can easily go. I didn't anticipate questions to be asked on. Do you have list of companies that have contract, uh, committed infractions and what has been their punishment? That I can easily get it from the Chief Inspector of Mines. Uh, if I say something, I would lie to you.
Okay, so respectfully, we will, um, ask that you add that to the list of, um, documents you will have to submit. Because I'm sure it will come up at plenary, they will ask us, um, if we, uh, sought that information from you. So please, let's have the list of sanctions. If you have, uh, sanctioned any companies in recent times and, uh, what were their offenses or the various breaches for which they were sanctioned. Then I want to come to your inspectorate, directorate. Have you had instances where there has been collusion? Because what is going on and with the impunity with which these mining companies are operating? I mean, the bad ones out there and, uh, we have all agreed here that not all of them are doing the right thing. Um, has there been any instance where your inspectorate, directorate officials are complicit or colluding with them to create the, uh, crisis that we, we, we have on our hands?
Sure, none that I know of, because I will have signed a dismissal letter or suspension or commission and investigation as per the conditions or service as applied in the public service. I don't remember. People have been dismissed for other things that have nothing to do with Galamsi, like forgery of documents or something of that nature. But then have there been infractions by companies, large scale or whatever, for which sanctions have been exacted? Right from, uh, maybe fines to heavy fines, cancellation of licenses and this, yes, there, 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 there are some. Okay, like recently, we had to withdraw the license of the Prestea Mine for non-performance. All those things are there. That I can go to the records, categorize them for minor fines to heavy fines to cancellation, et cetera, and present it.
I want to come to the Akunta Mining Scandal of October twenty twenty-two. Uh, actually, September and October twenty twenty-two. I have a copy of, uh, the statement you issued at the time, third October twenty twenty-two. Uh, just for the sake of time, read the last, uh, paragraph you said.
The one signed by me or Minister?
Uh, the one signed by you.
Okay.
Uh, even though you made reference to the Minister's own. So the last paragraph, quote, "And for the avoidance of any doubt, Akunta Mining Limited has no mining lease, mineral rights and or permits to undertake any mining operations in the Tano Nimre Forest Reserve. And steps are currently being undertaken to enforce the Minister's directive issued on thirty F, September twenty twenty-two." That was your last public statement on the matter. Can you inform this committee the steps that you took in line with the Minister's directive as you indicated in your press statement of third October twenty twenty-two?
Sure, there are two follow-ups there. The Minister's directive was on the license for which I commented on and that is the letter respective we are holding. The other one is to authorize the institution to take steps to, you know, uh, uh, you know, sort out the matter, which is forestry commission, not Minerals Commission. First, because it was in a forest area, it is forestry commission that must go and takes extra and make sure that nobody enters or they demobilize. So they will be the best person to answer that. But on my side, no further action has been taken to say, let's issue additional documentation for them to proceed further. In fact, the Minister was categorical. He's not going to do anything. So Chair, I will want you to direct that question to forestry commission that what did they do following this? If it was answered, the forest area, I will have answered.
There was an aspect also to do with criminal investigations. The OSB at the time weighed in and said that they will investigate. Um, as the House, we haven't had any updates from the OSB. We don't know if you are in a better position. Do you know what has happened?
I've not had anything. Neither have I been called to serve as like a witness or testify or look, come and explain this bit of the law to us. Nobody has reached out to us yet. So again, maybe, I don't know whether it will be out of place if your office can write to who experience, say, look, what has happened to this?
Still on Akunta Mining, have you followed the continuous reports by that outstanding mining journalist, Erastos Asaridonko, uh, former journalist of the year? And, uh, this House would like to commend him highly for his patriotic journalism. Um, in a latest report he filed, he stated, quote, "Akunta Mining Limited has breached section ninety-nine six of the Minerals and Mining Act two thousand and six at seven zero three as amended." It states that where a person mines with any method in or along the banks of a natural water body or the territorial sea of Ghana, he or she is liable upon conviction to a fine of six hundred thousand Ghana cedis to one point two million Ghana cedis or a term of imprisonment of fifteen to twenty-five years or both. The Minerals Commission is responsible for regulating Akunta Mining operations in Samra Boy, but it appears to be turning a blind eye to the clear breaches of Akunta Mining Limited, unquote. Uh, are you conversant with this, uh, report? Has it been brought to your attention? The alleged breaches of the law by Akunta Mining in their, uh, Samra Boy concession?
Chair, I think these details are false clearly from the earlier question you asked. You remember what you read, my letter that may reference the Minister's letter. I felt some concern. I don't think they have all the appropriate authorization or approvals. And I don't think we took any steps following the report. So I'll plead with you. Let forestry commission come and answer. Because the only way Minerals Commission can enter a forest and monitor and regulate anything, I'm not dodging the question, I'm not doing back passing, is if they have all the approvals and they are working. So for example, if it's a, if this was about Newmont or Chirano or Awasso, and then I can answer, that'd be the force within our mandate. But if you are saying, or if the report is saying Samra Boy and I believe it falls within the forest area and they are doing anything, then forestry commission should be able to come and answer. Because it has not reached a stage where I will have to also, Mincom will also have to come in and then also exercise some regulatory fancy because I don't think they have all the approvals. So forestry commission should come and answer.
Do you interface with forestry commission? Do you, do you work together? Do you have any collaboration?
Big time. CEO, we have CEO's collaboration. I'm in touch with Valoti. I work closely with Mr. Brown, who is the boss of Forestry Services Commission. Both of us report to the same minister. So we have collaboration when it comes to all these activities. But I'm unable to speak to things within their domain. In fact, sometimes they, I get pictures and videos and things or even it may be a comment made by you or any other person. Then I just put it on WhatsApp. So, Mr. Valoti, this has come to my attention. They will fit. So there have been instances where some of the things he has done or certain things, actions he has taken, that have been brought to my attention. You know, he also draws on my attention. He says, Martin, when the, this area is not a forest reserve, so, uh, you, they will fit or something. I do so for EPA. So we have, we have collaboration with them. In fact, under the World Bank project, we are supposed to integrate our cadaster. EPA, Lance Commission, Geological Survey and have, you know, the same, uh, uh, what do you call it? Seamless integration, which we are working on. We have completed their base, so we are even waiting to log in EPA so that they can access our system directly. That's, that's a thing to which we've gone far in our collaboration.
So the situation we have with these notorious mining companies not complying with our laws and all of that. Um, do you have a list that if you had your own way, you would blacklist? Um, and withdraw their licenses, revoke their licenses and impose sanctions, uh, in the course of your work? But perhaps you have not done that yet. Do you have that list?
Oh, yes, as you said in your earlier question, you know, uh, when there are infractions, depending on the nature of the infractions, it could raise, it could range from warning, don't do it again, it depends. Or a fine, minor, major, or to even shutting down or even, as I said, withdrawing licenses altogether. The best example I can give you is the termination of the license of Bugosu Prestea Mine for non-performance, lack of capacity and then, uh, not be able to perform. That's, that's one of the best examples I can give, which I'm just putting before you. Because that one, it comes, it's barely two or so weeks. The license has been terminated.
With your twenty-two years' experience at the Minerals Commission, has there been any instance where the commission wants to clamp down on the mining company? But political interference and other interferences have gotten in your way and prevented you from doing what you have to do if you were left freely to operate?
I don't think so. I have never been called to say, stop this operation. Or the inspectors are going, then they will say, don't go here or whatever. I have not been told that. Because the aftermath will be catastrophic. If you don't go and stop it, you will end up the way we are, you know, discussing now. Nobody has called me and neither has anybody also called me and said, oh, go after this person because he's on the other side or he's a opponent. No, I've never received such instructions. If people go and do other things, then it's, it's their, on the folly of their own. Nobody has called me, for example, and I'll be very blunt to say, oh, we suspect these are appendages or they are links, let's say, NDC or some other party. So fast three demo destroyed the license. I've never received such instructions. No.
Do you think that we need external support to help us win the war against illegal mining?
No, Parliament should approve more money for geological survey. Support our idea of river wardings, et cetera. It's just a budgetary issue. Let's resource geological survey. And as I said, fortunately, it tells me that, and, uh, I've just realized that these are media because I perhaps, I'm not boasting, but I'm the most visible CEO on the media space. I am on Metro Tasi in the afternoon at Semper, Monday at Dome. In fact, but for this program, I will be on a dome. I'm on GTV Wednesdays. And we do a lot of public education and people are beginning to understand mining a lot. Fortunately, it tells you that after listening and reading all the manifestos of the political parties, they have been listening to what I've been doing with Obi, Randy or Temataki. I see the NDC manifestos saying we'll resource geological survey. I see the vice presidency, I'll make ten billion, ten million dollars available. It tells you that all the political parties, at least the major ones, have come to accept the point we have been making all along that we need to resource geological survey to do more exploration. And, and the day I saw all these things, I was very happy. I was at the program when the vice president announced that. And then I saw the NDC manifesto saying that we resource geological survey. Why are they all saying this? It means they understand the fundamental issues. So I'm, I'm quite happy that even, because never have I ever seen this in, in, in any party manifesto all my life. It means that the noise we are making or the discussion has gone down well, at least. And I'm happy with that.
Well, it does appear that, uh, on the specific response to whether we need external funding, uh, for the first time, you may be, you may be disagreeing with your sector minister.
Like external funding, sorry.
External assistance.
To do what exactly, respectively?
To, 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 to fight the, the menace, to fight Galamsi.
Oh, so for example.
Because, uh, let me, let me, let me just quickly so that, uh, uh, your minister was in the UK. The UK promised three point nine million pounds to support Ghana's fight against illegal gold mining and smuggling. And he's pictured here in a picture with, uh, James Spencer cleverly. Uh, UK Secretary of State for Foreign Commonwealth Development Affairs. Then there's World Bank to support Ghana with fifty million dollars, uh, to fight Galamsi. Then there's the latest one, uh, UAE pledges thirty million dollars, uh, for forest conservation. So it, it appears that there's a lot of, uh, international assistance being sought by, by, by government. But you, but you, you are saying that you don't think that it's a matter of external assistance.
Then I didn't understand your question. Because if you are lay foundation with this, I'll have been signed. So for example, I've told you that under the World Bank project, which was approved by this House, that five-year project, many of the reforms that are taking place by under EPA, Minerals Commission, Forestry Commission and Geological Survey, a huge chunk of it is to address the illegal mining many. So for example, a chunk of the budget is going to EPA. We're also getting some to reform the licensing regime. The EPA, sorry, Geological Survey is getting some money to buy drones to do geological investigation. So some of the areas they are going to investigate is under the World Bank program, apart from the one coming from Mincom. So it is already happening. I didn't understand it that way. I actually understood to me, do you have to, external forces to put them in the water body or something?
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, so that's okay. If somebody wants to give us money to do reclamation, why not? It's welcome.
Okay. Uh, thanks for the clarification. Um, so you have told us that the most defining consequential intervention in your expert opinion, your recommendation, is for this geological investigation to be done.
Number one.
Number one. And you say we need about ten million dollars for that?
I, I said, the vice president has said, when we commission the good refining now, in a budget selected, you make that kind of money available. The NDC also says we'll resource.
Yeah.
But I'm saying that even
I did ask you, I, I wrote it here, I did ask you how much we will need. And you said ten million dollars. And you said we can even start with five million dollars. I have your response here.
And the ten million dollars is not a one-off thing. At least every year.
Every year, okay.
And the more money, the better. And I even went ahead and said, expand it to include even private sector exploration service providers.
Great. So, so my question is, we are having all of these inflows. World Bank, fifty million dollars, UAE, thirty million dollars, UK, three point nine million pounds. You put all of this together, it's, these three alone, we're talking about, about, let's say roughly eighty-four, eighty-five million dollars. We're in excess of the ten million dollars we need to start this consequential defining intervention that you are, you are, you are telling this committee today. Is it that we are misapplying these funds? We don't have our priorities right? Because all these monies are coming in, we are getting external support, but we don't seem to be applying it to the matter that to you is the most important. What is accounting for this? Is it that you, the experts, are not advising the politicians? Or the politicians are not taking your advice? I mean, because there's a clear dichotomy between what really we should be spending money on, in your opinion, and what we are actually spending money on?
Sure, two things. One, the funds are for some number of years. Like the World Bank one is for five years. So it's not, you know, it's for a period of time. So that's number one.
Yeah, but couldn't we, couldn't we be doing geological investigations with that?
I'm coming to that. Two, the funds have various components and they are doing different things. As I said, there's a lot being pumped into EPA to do a lot of reclamation, environmental issues and stuff. That's one aspect of it. Because we can also not leave the things there like that. It's so disgusting when you fly across. Three, a huge component is going into geological investigation, but it's not enough. So some are doing geological investigation, some reclamation, some are even improving, you know, eh, eh, the skills and then the technical capacity. Some are even giving eh other tools, equipment, resources. I mean procurement of drones for geological survey and all those things. So there are a lot of measures being put together. So geological investigation is one, one aspect of it. Eh, because eventually, all these pits, galleys or whatever has been left there, will have to be reclaimed. So they are doing different things at the same time.
Then can I take your expert view on L I two four six two? There's been a lot of agitation out there that it has to be repealed. Um, particularly the provision relating to the precedent in exceptional circumstances allowing for mining in forests uh and other uh conservationists, treasure troofs. Uh, I have the L I here. Uh, there's a, a tall list of the areas that we, we cannot, we cannot mine. Um, uh, you, you are conversant with, with that already. Um, the prohibited areas, I can go through the list. A globally significant biodiversity area, a protected provenance area, an institutional research plot, a hill sanctuary, a high conservation value area, a seed orchard, swamp sanctuary, plantation sites and cultural sites. However, there is a proviso that despite paragraph A of sub-regulation one, the president may, subject to article two six eight of the constitution, give approval in writing to a mining company to undertake mining activity in a globally significant biodiversity area in the national interest. This has generated considerable controversy. Uh, what's your view uh on, on this? Do you, do you think that Parliament and the executive should have a second look at this in line with what environmental activists are saying?
Sure, I have my personal views. And I think myself and Honorable Suini have discussed this briefly, briefly. In one of his discussions in Metro, when he was going out, I was coming in. Especially if it's Thursday, our paths cross. I had a whole clip which I did for like an hour on whether we shall allow mining in forest reserves. I'll share it with Honorable Jiyagi and then I will want you to listen to it. If it is the position of Ghanaians that look, get rid of this thing, so be it. We'll respect it. But if you ask me personally, eh, I think that sometime when there are issues, we don't deal with it dispassionately. If I sit here and tell you there are no illegalities, I'm lying to you and I'll be a fool. So look at this man, he's doing politics with his job. No. What we have not done as a nation is that the bitter truth is that our forests have a lot of minerals, several. I mean, gold is just the tip of iceberg. If I tell you the kind of things in Mali, you'll be shocked. The geology has been there. Cota, Nikel, the so-called green minerals or technology minerals. My personal view, no government, is for us to look for money and give it to geological survey and do a proper mapping of what exactly is there. What do you have? And then sit back as a nation and say, "So this is a state of play." And then make the right decisions. Okay, we're not going to allow mining at all in forest reserve. Case closed, we sign off. It's okay. My view will be, why don't you prioritize and have three or four categories? And it's all in that video. One, I, for example, support underground mining in forest reserves. My personal view. The kind of thing that is happening in Chirano. So when you do the mapping, realize that, oh, this one, the whole body is deep-seated. It's not the headwaters of water bodies. It's not in a globally sensitive area and all those things. They are going to sink a shaft, not even the size of this room. Why don't you permit it? Sink a shaft, take the ore out, outside the forest reserve and go and process. Because processes do can harm the flora and fauna. That's number one. And say, in this scenario, we allow and do it properly. Newmont, Achin, they are about to go underground. Number two, oh, this one, head of the water bodies, we shouldn't allow them. You can't go there, no matter what is there. Number three, maybe globally sensitive area. So for example, Foresty Commission told me there's a place called Kujai. Even when the leaf draws by, pass by, they use it for scientific research and other things. So we should be doing that. And when we finish all these things and then the general mood or debate is that whether it is globally sensitive, Kujai, even underground, because the deepest mine in Ghana is one kilometer of Wasi. Even if it is two kilometers deep and you can go, the shaft is just the size of this place. You can take it outside to all the way like police headquarters outside and go and process. We shouldn't even allow it. That is the decision of Ghanaians. Like the way we go to the post and decide who should lead us, fifty plus one. That's my position. That's what I think. You understand that? Hey, that's my personal view and I, I say it everywhere. These days, eh, 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 I've, I've, you know, because of what the issue is, I say, hey, hold on, this is what I think, it's not government view. But for me, I think we should allow some form of mining in forest reserve under certain circumstances. Underground, I support it. If you ask me. As to whether government will take it or not, it's up to the final decision makers. As to whether eh we want a blanket ban on all forms of mining in forest reserve. The ones that have been issued already are grandfathered. Like Ghana Bullseye nineteen forty-one, Chirano, underground, eh, whatever, it's okay. You know, I'm seeing that deal for example, I say, "Look, whatever has been done, leave it. No more going forward." That's fine. But that's my personal view. I'll share that clip with you and take your time and listen. There is some, eh, I, I'm making sense in a way. But as I said at the concluding part of Metro TV, if people, it's like this abortion debate. You see me raising it there. There are some people, no matter what, even if the child is raped by who, they, they don't know who the person is, they will say, "No, you should give birth" because of religious belief. If you do, our law allows abortion and other circumstances. I even use that to explain it. That somebody comes to your house, ransack your family, you don't know the person, your seventeen-year-old daughter is raped, man's underlined, she's pregnant. And then you say, "I'm a Catholic." No, she should give birth. Some other says the law allows, it lets us abort. So I can understand. So if the whole Ghana says, "No, don't do anything in the forest," so be it. But that's my personal view and I'm happy you asked me of my personal technical opinion. I'll leave it here.
All right, Honorable Suini and then uh we'll come to Honorable Roxen. Uh, we, we want to, we, we, we want to try and wrap up by, by four fifteen latest. Uh, so, Mr. Icy, we know that we've kept you for a long time, but it's because the issues are, are so germane and uh it's, it's the most important matter in our country today. So please bear with us.
Mr. Icy is a strong man, so I know he, he can endure. Eh, a very strong man with strong convictions, like he just did by sharing his technical view, a view that I continue to disagree with. I have always maintained that at our level of indiscipline, it's very risky to open our forest reserves up for mining. And so not until we sanitize the system, it is a no-go area for me. There must be a total ban, but Chairman? Well, um, yeah, I'm sure that you can
I've said that several
He has made an offer to the lands and, you know, Natural Resources Committee and we are working on it. I know my chairman is working on it. So we can even do a joint visit, yes. Uh, but Ms. Icy, I want to find out from you first of all, what your position on community mining is? Is it legal? And under which law? And how has it helped in the, you know, fight against irresponsible and illegal mining, community mining? Is it legal?
Yes, sure. Community mining is perfectly legal. And let me explain that there is no authorization, approver or license called community mining. I believe that's what people have been saying and our bank said it. So there's no committing mining license. Community mining is nothing but small-scale licenses. It's the same small-scale they give them. Why the target community? That as much as possible, we encourage people from the community to also do it so that you also say, "Oh, at least they benefit from their resources." It's the same small-scale licenses we give them. So when I believe people and other
So are they, are they taken through the same process? Your mic?
Same process.
Same license, the regime?
So there's no license like committing mining license. It's the same
And how has it helped in this fight against um irresponsible, especially irresponsible mining?
It has helped a lot. In fact, many of the areas were once illegal areas which we formalize. I'll share videos. Some of the areas who were areas that were given by the last K people. And then let me say this. There are persons who, for some reason, took advantage, mount signboard, because I, I heard a lot of that. And they'll put there, maybe Icy committing mining or Peki committing mining, where my mother comes from, or Rara committing mining, my father's, and they are there working. So when journalists pass by or the media persons say, "Oh, look at them, glorify Galamsi." We ask the officers to check, realize that they don't have any authorizations. We, we clamp down on them, declare them. Those were the areas where they were burning all those stuff. Some occasionally, depending on the nature of the report, like Achiniva reported in this Bousa area, we say, "Okay, let's take steps and formalize them." That's why as far back as two thousand and one, ministers made us do this. Come out with a manual so you can see small-scale and community mining scheme. Because nothing stops an individual, let's say your brother, Honorable Chair, Honorable Suini, your brother today approaching Minerals Commission and say, "I want to do small-scale mining." That's not committing mining. You understand that? Hey, and he can apply like anybody else. He can give me a license because small-scale license, it could be an individual, an enterprise or a cooperative, if he so wish, or a group of five people or ten. You understand that? Hey, so it is perfectly lawful, it falls under the small-scale provisions.
So, so from your, from your assessment, your observation, how many types of mining are most prevalent in Ghana? And which ones are easy to deal with? Galamsi, I mean, the types of Galamsi that you commonly see around and which one is easier to deal with? I know there are different means, different types through which they extract the gold, many of them across the world. But in Ghana, which ones are most common and which ones are easy to deal with?
For example, one of the commonest is people going into the forest reserves to go and mine without appropriate authorizations. That's Galamsi. That's one. People go into the water body, which we don't license anyway. And then on land, people starting something that they don't have license to do. Eh, the easiest for me are two areas. Areas that are underground or areas that are open pit, provided they are free. In other words, to that extent, they don't fall within the concessions of other people. Then it is very easy for me, I can slip over it. So for example, if you tell me now that some people are doing some koli-koli somewhere and I send the officer there, he, he does the investigations and then the officer says, "Yes, they don't have a license." By looking at the nature of the activities, it's something we can formalize for them, I will slip. It will be very easy for me. If the place is free and it doesn't fall within some of the things that ordinarily will not permit. Because there have been so many areas that are free that we'll not grant license over because of the nature of the topography, it is close to a settlement, it's in a Ramsar site or he has just physically invaded other people's property.
Has a commission, has a commission assess alluvial mining? The mill house and the chum fine? To find out which one most affect the environment?
Fine is just a brand. Eh, that thing they mount in a water body. Eh, they're less intrusive in underground. But alluvia, you see, alluvia, that's what they say in water body. That's what most people don't know. The moment you see alluvia, now people think that, oh, it's by the water body. They are going to divert the water body or just by the marks. No, you can go into an area where there's no water body and then you see, because it's weathered material. Okay, A-level joke, weathered material, alluvia on top, then the hard rock. So sometime ago, when I heard people defining eh alluvia to me is by the water body, it is wrong. There are so many areas. So you see that if you go to some areas, to use Ghanaian English, the miners have choked the alluvia and it's like with the hard rock. Because they want to move quickly to other areas or the, the, the hard rock will require more funding. Because then you have to deploy machines, you have to break up the roads and so that comes in explosives, et cetera. So alluvia, respectfully, Honorable Suini, maybe if all of us, you know, today, has nothing to do with water body per se. You can go to an area, there's no water body. It's just that weathered material over the years, you know, look like alluvia. And then on, on deep beneath it is just a hard rock. So you see hard rock and alluvia. Sometimes you see like the under of a soup, we call it coluvia. So alluvia does not necessarily mean water body or by the water body, far from it. That, that impression is out there.
So when you are issuing licenses, do you take into consideration which type is used for the extraction?
Yes, detailed report. In fact, I'll share the nature of such reports, samples with you. When the officer is, I'll share a typical, I'll put it in a platform, about three or four different areas. So you see the way they do the report. The officer goes there, once with large application, like he goes there. And then to get, they go there as a team, they do the survey. He will describe the nature of the topography, vegetation, whether there are crops there, eh, the nature of the ore body is underground or whether it is even surface. And if it's surface, does it involve alluvia and coluvia? They describe all those things extensively. And then you now see that, save the following will permit it or because of X, Y, Z will not permit it. Or it is close to the water body. So if it's twenty-five acres, you should take out ten and keep the fifteen. All those things going to it. I'll share typical reports of how the survey is done.
Now last but one, what will it take, based on your assessment, to reclaim lands and water bodies that have been destroyed by Galamsi in the last couple of years? Because it falls within the commission's ambit.
It will take a lot of funding. It will take a lot of funding to do that. Some areas have been reclaimed.
Funding for what?
Uh, so Honorable Suini, for example, those galleys and pits you see around, you cannot just ordinarily cover them. They have to do testing of the soil, because you, you can just go and cover chemicals or heavy metals. Anything you have leveled the place, people plant all kinds of things and years down the line, people are eating. There are some reclamation that have been, you know, done, you know, but you require money to reclaim all these areas. So again, it has to be some projects to be able to reclaim all those things. Some areas have been done already, there are about some five, six areas that have been reclaimed. And I want to take some of the committee to some of these reclaimers. Fortunately, we have before and after videos and pictures. There are lots that have been done, but if you ask me what percentage has been reclaimed, I don't think we even have ten percent, because it will cost billions to do this reclamation. And this is the end result of all these things that we've seen over the years. That's why I keep saying that if you don't license them, things will go awry. But, uh.
And that's where I still disagree with you. It will cost billions to reclaim and you think that we should still license for people, some of them to still engage in irresponsible mining, even though they have license. And yet we are not thinking of the, how to even stop it, so we can see if we can raise the billions to do their reclamation and then the, you know, uh, the reclamation of the destroyed, uh, land and water bodies.
Honorable Chair, to the Chair, God, there's a Chair presiding. For example, uh, respectfully, do you have issues of, let's say, we licensing underground operations for small scale? Underground.
Uh, is that a question to me?
Uh, because I'm trying to pick your thoughts. You know, it's a discussion we're having. You're asking me questions.
I, I, if, if you license, if you license with the assurance that the company is going to engage in responsible mining, because you told us that license does not automatically make the miner responsible.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm putting that question respectfully as an answer, not out of like spite or whatever, to, to just say that, okay, it's a way of me trying to say that it shouldn't be a blanket ban. That you can actually ring fence on areas and say, for these ones, life must go on.
Okay, so you are, you are, you are for a selective ban, but not a blanket ban?
Not, not, not selective ban, not selective ban. I mean, let me be honest with you, nobody will allow you to go into the water body, nobody give you license to go into water body. What is just happening is criminal, it has to be dealt with. You understand that? But if, if I would not favor a blanket ban and say, because of what has happened, everybody jawayjuma. But if an area in your constituency, which is not deep-seated, it's not underground, it's open pit, I believe Tamalino or Central, Tamalino, you come to and say, Martin, there's this hundred acres here, and a car, uh, license is twenty-five acres maximum, so that will give you four licenses, it's open pit, you know, can we go ahead? When we do the inspections available, I think that hundred or two hundred people should be able to work. Our job is to make sure that the writing is done. So I'll not say selective ban, but I'm saying, don't let us ban it outright.
Okay, finally, because.
Because we know where the problem is. We know the problem. Going to the forest without the right permits, going to the water body, that's where the problem is. That's what is making everybody angry.
Okay, so you made reference to the Niemond Achim Mine. This may not be related to, um, Galamsey, but I just want to pick your thought on it. The information, even though, yes, if you extend it, it's also related to Galamsey, because if we get that sector well done, we can, uh, uh, you know, streamline and sanitize the, the small-scale mining. The new, there's, there has been reports that the Niemond Achim Mine at Abim is going to be sold. And there was the expectation that, um, it will get some Ghanaian patronage. The news reports suggest that it is in the case. And very soon, uh, a successful bidder may be announced, but from all indications, it may not be a Ghanaian. People are worried and they're asking the question whether Ghana or the government of Ghana has the right of consent in this whole arrangement, so that it can be leveraged to, uh, make Ghanians actually own the benefits of these natural resources and possibly even absorb some of these, uh, small-scale miners that are creating problems. What is your take on that?
Sure, I believe it's a mining story. I think somebody sent it to me. The, I've seen the mine, something written by the mine, uh, on it also, I've read it. Uh, has it served in conclusion? No. Has any announcement been made? No. So I don't have any information to that yet, but I knew that, I mean, there were bidders from Ghana, China and all those places. So Honorable Suini, respectfully to the Chair, I think our advice that we wait to see what announcement may come through and then, uh, uh.
But the question is, based on your experience, does the government of Ghana have a right of consent that they can exercise?
Nothing can happen in the mining sector without approval of the government. And by that, I mean, without approval of the minister acting on advice on the Minister's Commission. So if, if the announcement is, is made, it will come through.
Will you expect the government of Ghana to exercise that leverage, you know, in such a way that the country, uh, or the Ghanaian investor?
There are several ways.
Is favorably considered?
There are several ways of cleaning a cut. I mean, you can go under section fourteen or seven zero three or fifty-two, depending on whether I'm doing a share transfer or an assignment. So, and I think Minister has made it public. I think he, he made it public that they are expecting some level of local content or local participation, and it can take various forms. The Mivango, some shareholding by Ghanians, enhanced states, interest, et cetera. So granted that even another company gets it other than Ghana, I don't know yet, you still have to come back and sit to government and say, well, we want some level of local participation and these are the ground rules. That's why I'll prefer that we wait and see, because it could even be a company that may not necessarily be a Ghana. And then government says, okay, we want local participation, so these are the rules. And then we have to sit to government and do negotiations. So I think it may be premature.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
For, for the immani write-up. And even granted that that's the case, it's not over yet. And that's not the case, so let's wait for the minister.
Thank you. Yeah, we are, we are almost done. Honorable, uh, Roxanne, you have.
Chairman, thank you very much.
You have only two questions.
A small-scale and community mining, it's, it's, it's a legitimate lawful business, which has a manual, that is enforceable. So if you don't follow this manual, then you, then you run into problems. But if you follow it, this is an enforceable guide, so we need to be very clear on that.
Okay.
Then two. The issue about alluvium, alluvia not connected to, it is always, it's always connected to water. Water may not be there today, but water must have been there millions of years ago.
Yes.
And deposited the material. You taught me that and I don't think it has changed. So, and you know, these minerals are, they've been created over millions of years of geologic action. So today we may, we are fortunate to be mining them today, but they were created millions of years ago. So water may not be where they are found in the alluvium-bearing or bearing, uh, alluvial material, but water must have been there, uh, millions of years ago. So it always has a connection with some water. Then substantively, seven zero three as amended by nine nine five gives you some internal mechanisms for even checking illegal mine, my small-scale illegal mining in their localities. For instance, section ninety tells you to create what they call the, the district mining areas and, and, and create what we call small-scale mining centers. So I want to find out whether you have done that. Then two, under ninety-two, it tells you to form the mine, small-scale mining committees. The composition is also, the com- uh, the composition of that committee is also outlined in law. So let me find out from you whether these, these committees as defined in law are in place and whether they are performing their functions and whether the, the, the small-scale mining centers also outlined in under section ninety is also, it's also been established. Chair, thank you very much. Every district office of the Minister's Commission is a commi- uh, small-scale center. So for example, the recently commissioned one, Bibiani, also doubles as a small-scale center, because upon those three last year, I mentioned, there are several thousands of small-scale miners in, in the area of where Honorable Fredo being in, uh, uh, a contaminant NP operates.
Yeah, CEO, so why is it?
That's one.
Why is it difficult for these committees and, and centers to deal with the illegal activities as we see it? Why are they so incapacitated in dealing with the menace of the unlawful small-scale mining activities?
Sometimes it's not, I don't know. You see, again, Honorable Chair, you know, this, this, I use my best example, two, two of them, one is in one in Ashanti. Economic thing. Chairman, thank you, I give up. Okay? And then behind the police station, I think your name.
Thank you, uh, Honorable Yadom.
Thank you. Uh, CEO, mine is a, a proposal to fight against the Galamsey issue. Uh, my constituency, we have a, a mining company called GCDL, Ghana Considerated and Most Limited, which under their license, they do also have, um, Tributaries Association.
Yes.
And this Tributaries Association have helped to fight against Galamsey. In a sense that they normally give out the, the mine-out area to their indigenous, so that when they work and they have their proceeds, they give it out to the company to create an internal fund to support the mining activities for the company. Why not government considering this formula? To give out large-scale companies when they mine out area can be given to the indigenous from the same community?
Two things, actually, but for them will have been worse off. One of the four areas or ways we license small-scale now is what you just explained. Landscape people relinquishing their area, like Pesos Azan recently, some five thousand people, we're going to do it for them. You understand? So that's one of the areas. They've been cooperating, but for them will have had a lot of problems. I've explained the other three already, where the small-scale miner come on his own, licenses have been canceled, the second one, or when you prospect for three years, you relinquish, we also give it out. So that is one. But the, so that is it, it's already happening. But the tributary you explained, that is not the way it operates. The tributary is not a mine-out area. The tributary is where, for example, you have this your concession, then you decide that maybe around where Madame Giaga and Nihani's, you, for the sake of good neighborliness and giving just so then and prevent them from invading, there are some hundred people here. So you register them with approval of the Chief Inspector of Mines, they come and work and sell to you. That is how, uh, GCD, Akwati Adamo has been doing it for centuries. So many of us are piloting it. So for example, Presia Bogosu Mine, there's something we call locum. There's an area where the community quickly form a service company and they are mining and selling to Bogosu Presia Mine. It is even for a mine-out area. So for now, I think Estra Gold and GCD, they are, they used to do that. Some mining companies also now want to do that, like Obuasi, for instance, one of the areas the small-scale miners have gone, they are thinking of doing these local people, let them mine and sell to you. Yeah, they sell to you and then you give them the equipment and support them. We, we, we support that a lot as a way of preventing invasion. But then why you are talking about giving out mine-out area is happening and not just mine-out area, we have prospected, we are looking for some sign to you. So all these things are happening. Yes, but it is not at the, it cannot happen at the pace, looking at, because everybody wants to do mining now. Everybody, everybody gets up, they want to do mining now. And I get worried, particularly in the north. Okay? What has stabilized the situation there is the fact that most of them is under, underground and rock. Why am I worried? One farming season. So everybody goes into mining in the entire savanna, who is going to feed them? And mining areas, the first characteristic feature you notice is high prices of goose. Things are more expensive in Taka than Akra, where everybody wants to mine. So it is just that God has, uh, for some reason said that for the north, the ore body should be rock and it's deep set, because alluvia is not common there. Everything is hard rock, tinge, dacrubet, et cetera. That's our lack. Fumbesi, Kandema, let me repeat that. So that is, that is happening already. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, my concluding questions, uh, there will not be much, uh, Mr. Yisi. I know that, uh, uh, it's been, uh, quite hectic. Uh, I, I want to begin with the community mining issue. I have here a report from the, uh, people of Atronsu, that they are having running battles with your outfit, that they did not agree to the community mining taking place there, that they have even engaged lawyers to, uh, take action. And they say that, uh, their will has not been respected and that the Atronsu stream has been polluted because of this community mining activity. Are you, are you aware of this matter, the Atronsu community? They say that their community is near Seeshi Bakwa.
Oh, I think that one even has, is it gone to court? Chair, uh, yes, I remember a case like that, but I need to refresh my memory to be able to answer properly. So three things are happening here. Some, uh, many of the areas we are licensing came from the committee and the chiefs. In fact, I'm told there's a chief even waiting for me for another area. So that's one category. Some are also led by the MPs, both sides. I mean, a lot of NDC MPs, I mean, there are NDC MPs in the mining area. I cannot say and say, because I'm working with government and you're NDC, so we shouldn't do it. That's why I made a statement that I have not received that. A lot of NDC MPs have even bought gold catches for their people, because it's a lawful activity. They come and say, boss, I'm coming to buy goods for my people. Both sides, they do it. Many of the gold catchers were places by MPs from both sides, some of them chiefs, some of them committees, some of them sponsors. All these things are happening. Then secondly, uh, let me also say that there are instances where there are internal rifts and, and fights, where maybe somebody thinks that you are going to benefit, so your colleague will undermine, we investigate realize that, oh, Omaga somewhere has some problems, we get it resolved and then it's, oh, it's okay. And then you turn out rather that somebody thinks that somebody is going to benefit than him, or he is not aware. And no committing mining scheme will launch without the approval of the chief, because the chief just sits in state. The Honorable, let me also add this one, where there has been opposition that they don't want it, we wash our hands. They don't want it, you can force them. So a lot have not been processed or stopped along the way, because the chiefs have written. So for example, I think Manpoini at the point he says, he doesn't even want mining in this area. So when I see any request, I say, no, the chief doesn't want it. Uh, some area in Agogo, the chief says, no. Now they have come back, they said, we allow. I can't believe. You see it? Hey, so where there's opposition, we stop it. But first we try to investigate, to see what is it, sometimes internal, and then occasionally some of them have been cleared, because it's internal feud. But some, you can see that the chiefs and the committees says, yeah, bad, end of story, we leave it there. You understand that? Hey, other than that, the bulk of it, the bulk of it, MPs, chiefs and responsible people in the committee laid it, they come in droves. So these are the things happening. So I can check more than two or three things. I, I remember a case like that. Do I still remember the full details now? No, unless I refresh my memory. So I can go back, look at the files and call you personally and say, actually, this is what is happening is no more, or it has been resolved. So there are all kinds of things that play here.
Okay, thank you very much. We will await the full report on that. Then there's another report Erastos Asaridonko filed recently about Chinese miners who are washing mining residue into the Tano River. Has that, has that come to your attention? This was filed on the eighteenth of September, twenty twenty four, just, just last month. And I have the videos here. It's really traumatizing to see the state of the Tano River and what these Chinese miners are doing, washing mining residue into, into the river. Where are your inspectorate officials? Why, why is this going on?
I, I don't think it has come to my attention. What I knew recently was the one that some people went and arrested some Chinese people. Is he Oketeche's group or whatever? Yes.
Well, then, this is different. So I would, I'll forward it to you.
Please, please, and then we can, we can go there.
Please, please take action for us. It's, it's, it's
But what worries me is also these Chinese people who are all over in our community. And then it interests you to know that our chiefs and our people are the ones renting the houses for the Bokina base, the Togolis and these Chinese. I wonder how these things are happening. Did you hear of the case in Seeshi, you also recently, where we arrested a Chinese person and the chief came asking for bail? When you see things like that, it's very frustrating. A chief asking for bail.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. But shouldn't we start with the visa regime and our immigration? How are, how are they getting into the country? Because if they are not coming for lawful activity, if they are not tourists, they have no business engaging in small scale mining. It's reserved for Ghanaian nationals. So our embassies, our high commissions and deport authorities have questions to answer. Don't you agree?
So two things. I thought some time ago, this issue of visa arrival thing came up strongly. I don't know what happened, but I can check with the immigration person to see. Because if the Chinese were flagged, I don't know whether some time ago we stopped it so that they screened them properly. Yeah, so that's number one. Then number two, Honorable Chen, members of this distinguished committee. If we get these people, we should prosecute them. So we should be seeing more of this Aisha one people in jail. We should be seeing more of the Chinese people in jail. Okay, so for example, this committee, me, I'm interested and the journalists are interested. And sometimes that's where I have a problem. The journalist bring the story, we are happy, we follow. It makes us also sit up like this Tano thing you are talking about. So those two guys that were handed over to that Oketeche and Co arrested, what has happened? Nobody is asking any question. What has happened to those? Are they six or so of them? You saw that video? Yeah, we need to know what has happened to them. Were they granted bail? If they've been granted, have they been prosecuted or whatever? Nobody is following almost all those cases. Yeah, remember the Oda, Oda and Sumjay? We arrested some people Yemenis. I even made noise about it. And then a chief showed up, he says, hi, media. He didn't have license. I don't know what has happened to those Yemenis. So sometimes we should just go beyond. So it's not necessary to, it's not enough to have the fast track special courts, but also we need to know. For example, I love the likes of you who are the forefront of trapping all these things. What is happening to these Chinese that were handed over to immigration? And I think we are beginning to see now communities taking charge and say, we'll not allow this. The success story of Seeshia Kontombra and one other community where they just woke up and drove Galamsa people away. So things are changing and I love that kind of spirit. But these Chinese that were arrested recently, not just Oketeche, another group again, nobody is doing anything about it. No, like, we are not, we are not hearing from immigration what is happening. Have they been deported? Have they been granted? We are waiting for court so that we hear, because the chief justice is also saying that it's a prosecutors who are not up to their game. And I think we are tired of this blame game. Chinese interpreters, all kinds of things, it is frustrating. Nobody is telling us anything. So immigration should come and explain to us what has happened to these? Is it these six, four Chinese that were handed over to them by Oketeche's group? What has happened? We've not heard anything. But if we are hearing today that now they have been arraigned before the court, very soon judgment will pass and they'll go in jail. They'll go to jail. Then you see, the nation will realize that because they are all over the place. They are all over the place. And I think it appears as if they are getting away with things. So we want to see that that particular one immigration must answer because they were handed over to immigration. What has happened since then? You see?
No, we totally agree with you on that and we will duly, duly follow up. I mean, last week I was quite sad when the Attorney General told the judges that they are appearing to delay cases, they should expedite. Then the Chief Justice responded immediately and said that the problem is with the prosecution. They are not prosecuting their case competently and expeditiously. So it was left in limbo. We don't know who really is responsible. But I agree with you that action ought to be taken and we must see, you know, that people are being sanctioned. People are being penalized. People are being jailed for their destruction of our environment. I agree with you on that.
That takes me to your word. I like that your word so much. One of the radical solutions to Honorable Sosu's issue of emergency or crisis situation. If we wake up everybody every day, five Chinese jail, this big man jail, this person jail, this person jail, then Ghanaans will say that, oh, things are working. Now we are hearing there are no interpreters and a whole lot of things.
Excellent, excellent. I agree with you. And that brings me to a big request we have, but it's, it's so useful and it's so crucial. Earlier, you dropped hints of some of our chiefs and MMDCs who are not cooperating. You have praised those who are really helping and assisting in the fight against Galamsa. Are you able to share that list of those who are not cooperating with us quietly? We would not publish it. We will not have it in open camera. Even though I agree that naming and shaming helps, but sometimes there may be the need for further investigations and all of that. Because we need to recognize that our own version of the fight against the drug trade, for example, like we have in South America, you know, where you have all these Mexican drug lords who are running route and, you know, killing and maiming and destroying and all of that. This is our version. And we know that there are overlords. We know that there are campaigns. We know there are financiers. There are people behind the scenes who have infiltrated everywhere, every institution. So not until we begin to identify those at the top who are collaborating to destroy our country, to destroy our livelihoods and to kill us, we will not get to the bottom of issues. So will you be willing to cooperate with us in that regard? In terms of those who are complicit, who may be at the top, either in chiefancy or in politics, you know, even within the judiciary, what have you, who are making this fight difficult?
Should I say that is beyond me or let me put it appropriately? That would not be for me to do because there are a few instances where when certain things have happened, I think the government has acted. So for example, the Busimifren D C was fired. Okay, that's number one. Two, sometimes people come and see all kinds of things. You said they should bring evidence, then opportunistic and nasty and all those kind of things. That's also an issue we are having. So maybe I'll throw it back to you. So for instance, these immigration people that took custody of these Chinese, are they four or six or whatever? What has happened? So that if the immigration, did immigration process them? First, because they were handed over to the police station. I believe immigration came in. So that particular police station and immigration officials that did the processing and all those things. What has happened since then? You see, so I think that's where the thing should start from. Or immigration say, okay, we process it. We check their documents, they were illegal or they are breaching the terms of their visa. And then police take, take, take care. Which police station is handling their case? Where has he reached? And those are the kind of things I'm talking about.
Okay, we get you. We are, we are getting there, we are wrapping up. I have here extras from the budget. Operation Vanguard, Anti-Galamsa Operation and REXEC, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four, we spent fifty eight point six million. Green Ghana Project, twelve point one million, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three. Alternative Employment and Livelihood Project, we spent three hundred twenty five point six million. Then National Forestation Program, we spent six hundred and eight million from twenty twenty to twenty twenty four. If you put this together, we are running to billions of Ghana cities. And yet, this is the state of our river bodies. What will you say is really the reason why we have failed so spectacularly as a country despite spending so much money? Billions of Ghana cities trying to save our environment?
If that's your last question, let me conclude by answering that by saying that until we get the place for the miners to work, all these measures, like those is web ban when we learnt in school, proof map, web ban, SAP, ERP one, ERP three, whatever, it can only be addressing the problem in one way or the other. But comprehensively, geological investigation. I hope when I leave here, it doesn't become my guy name. That is it, that's what it boils down to. That is what it boils down to. The opportunity to say, okay, henceforth, small scale mining is not allowed in Ghana. Then that one, you know that nobody is allowed to do it lawfully. But ultimately, we have to start now. Some geological investigation is going on, but thirteen regions, this my three million has even become a kick. Why? Because of the high price, people are going back to things that they've dumped. Now everything is sweet. So it goes back to your radical positions, geological investigation.
So finally, finally, what are you going to do differently after today's proceedings? When you go back to the minerals commission?
To keep pushing those five, six radical things that you talked about. Bottom line, timing, time is not our friend here. If between, between now and the next six months or one year, we see aggressive geological investigations, then I'll be a happy person. In fact, the day I saw all the parties saying that we research geological investigation, that is when my blood pressure started going down. It means that they were hearing us, they were understanding that. Nobody since nineteen ninety two has come out boldly. None of the parties have come out boldly by saying that we'll do this. It tells you that people are understanding the issues.
I thought you said Professor Akil Akbar and Co.
No.
No, they recommended.
They recommended, they recommended. They recommended, Professor Akil Akbar was the first board chair. If he answer, he's alive.
And so I would say you can make that, you can make that point forcefully.
Well, oh, I've been saying it. I mean, I've been saying it. I have several clips on small scale. And I've said it that no matter what measures we put in place, they address the problem up to a point. You understand that? Yeah, you can, you have an open wood, you can put the saw on it. You prevent the flies from moving around. Three, four days, you won't say, nee itu ba, nee itu. You understand that? Yeah, so the point has been made, thirty years of inaction. That is what has brought us this far.
We hear you, Mr. EC. Thank you very much. The strong recommendation from this committee, as I, I sense from members, is that we are not happy you are still issuing licenses in the midst of this crisis. So please go and think about that. We don't, we don't want to say, we haven't gone to plenary, so we can't direct. But you can anticipate that this committee is going to recommend strongly to plenary that we are not happy with the continuous issuance of licenses. When we all agree that those with the licenses are also, a good number of them are also not complying with the responsible mining laws and regulations.
Sure, that is well noted.
So kindly think about it strongly, coming from this, this committee. I will be very happy to hear or read from you that you have reconsidered your position on the continuous issuance of mining licenses. So on that note, we want to thank you and your deputy. We know this has been a long one, but it is for God and country. So we are very grateful to you and we would, we would, we would, we will be in communication. Let me place on record that the chief executive had to postpone a travel to attend today's meeting. So this committee has taken judicial notice and we commend you for, for that, for placing this matter in its appropriate box in terms of priority. So we thank you very much for your continuous efforts and we pray that you will also listen to us on some of the strong views that, that we have so that we can together solve this crisis. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So Chet, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, I'm grateful.